It's nine oh five, we're gonna call it four two five meeting order. Mr. Bradford, will you please up hand give us invitation?
Good as always, how's it going? What's our business? Dear Father, we thank you, God, for allowing us to attend another meeting, God. Father, we just ask, oh God, you continue to look around and let the fishes, Father. Father, continue to give them wisdom from high, oh God. Father, continue to bind them close together that they may lead your people. Father, we just pray for our first responders, we pray for our schools, our kids, our nurses, our hospitals, oh God. Father, we just ask, oh God, you just look over this community. Bless all our workers, oh God, in the county, continue to keep them safe. And Father, we just pray for peace throughout this city, this county, this state, and this country, oh God. Father, continue to do your will. And Father, we want to pray for one that they have lost love once in the last couple of weeks. Father, strengthen their families that they're going through, oh God. Father, we want to pray for our county, Jefferson County, and their loss this past weekend. Father, continue to strengthen those, continue to speak to their vessel, oh God, it is time for breaching. And Father, we just ask, oh God, continue to open the finances for Adams County. Father, continue to bless businesses as they come in, oh God. And Father, we thank you in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
That's a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everybody. We're glad to be back in our, uh, office again. I guess about a month and a half, about. If anybody starts itching, just let me know. I'll be the first one out. Oh. I need a motion for the approval of the minutes for May two thousand twenty-five. Okay. Roll call. Mr. Gray.
Present.
Is here. Ms. Hutchins. Mr. Gaines. Not here. Mr. Middleton.
Present.
Ms. Dean.
Present.
Ms. Brandon Lewis.
Present.
Mr. Slow.
Here.
Ms. Khan.
Here.
And I'm here. Move to Mr. Gaines. Not here. He'll probably be... Does anybody talk to him? No, come on. All right, I need a motion for approval of the minutes. Moved by Mr. Middleton.
Say.
Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna vote to approve. Excuse me, what I can see in the extra stuff, I'm not able to read, so I can't. Uh, vote to approve something that I can't read. I think. I don't know how we gonna start doing this, but I'm gonna have to have paperwork on these minutes where I can be able to read them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Do you have anything specific?
No, it's just, I can see the minutes, but the extra. The exhibits. See attached exhibits.
So Corbett didn't print them out for you?
No, ma'am.
All right, we'll make another then. All right, any more discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried. I need a motion for approval of monthly financial reports for the Adams County Sheriff's Office, Chancery Clerk, and Purchase.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry.
I'm glad you skipped the doctors, could we, could we, uh, approve them a little later? Cause I got five or six things that the attorney is looking into. And, uh, we can prove them.
Okay.
Thanks.
We'll go on with the, uh, financial reports. Moved by Ms. Hutchins.
Say.
Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried. Special presentations, if any? Is anybody here for special presentation? Yeah, I'm pretty sure you're gonna be coming up here.
Get me out of the way quick.
You said you wouldn't start any trouble.
I'm not. My name is Everett Baker, most of y'all know me from search and rescue. Today, I'm here to speak on my hat at Adams County Volunteer Firefighters Association. Let me give you my background first before we go. I've been associated with three volunteer fire departments in my career. With eighteen years of structured fire training and experience. I have thirty-three years of the city forest commission. Primarily involved with fire and forest management. As you know, MFC is, is a primary fire protection agency. For all the wildland fires. I was selected to bring this issue to you, uh, this issue to you all about interlocal agreement. Between this board and the city matches. Concerning fire protection for residential county residents. Let me say, I'm gonna make, um, no way are these statements or comments that I'm making here are derogatory for the Natchez Fire. They are a great organization. We have worked well with them in the past. And for some reason, this document, uh, kind of puts that, that, uh, working relationship we've had with them in a different light. And I'll get into it in a few minutes. I'll echo what, uh, Mr. Gray said, I think at the last meeting. I was starting to state, now, what happened in nineteen ninety-four, what was good in nineteen ninety-four, doesn't necessarily mean it's good twenty-one years later today. Things change. I want to say, first off, that this document that I've got, is a legal agreement. We're not arguing that. What we've got is some issues with, within that agreement, uh, in the statements that are made. I broke this down into about three parts. First.
Excuse me?
And I don't, I don't really expect an answer from the board, but I just wanna bring this to light. Has anybody ever read this agreement and discussed this agreement? In July? Or was it just off your attention that this is something we've been doing annually? And need to agree to it and sign, and sign off on it? That's my first question. Don't expect an answer. Another thing that bothers me, there's no money set aside for this reason. There's no total dollar figure to cover four years, or even on a annual basis. That's hard for me to understand. Although indirectly, that's not taxpayer, that's top, taxpayer dollars. Indirectly, it's taxpayer dollars, but it's not directly taxpayer dollars. It's insurance rebate. Okay? It's just hard for me to conceive that that was done in a four-year agreement with no dollar figure in it. It did mention paying salaries, I'm assuming it was salaries, paying for sixteen firefighters on a monthly basis. As a side note, we got called. Or I heard a call out of Kingston Fire Station, the gas leak. Fire truck rolled by, went on down the road, turned around. Myself and another person got out, cut the gas off. It was spewing out of the ground, you could hear it. Those people only had, that truck only had two people in it, just as a sidebar. If this document was gonna be done for four years, I'm really concerned that volunteers were not included in it. But we've got a lot to deal with. And we'll figure about that in just a minute. The points I wanna make. I totally disagree, being a county resident myself. I totally disagree, disagree with several statements claimed in this document. That it's in the best interest of citizens in rural areas of the county to let Natchez Fire provide basic fire protection. Don't you realize how long it takes to Natchez get? To get the city? Or even to get across? Or where Mr. Gaines lives? It's a long time. Five o'clock afternoon, Highway sixty-one is tough. And you're maintaining, in the same time, four volunteer fire stations. Here's a simple example of what could happen. House trailers, once ignition starts, burns in seven to ten minutes, is fully involved. A trailer in Cranfield or Kingston, or basically any other area outside of a two-mile radius of Station Four, over Old Avenue, is gonna be fully involved. That's just, that's just the way they're made, okay? Other thing that kind of bothered me. Firefighters are a little bit of a different breed. They're almost like law enforcement. It's a brotherhood. They're trusting each other, they're dedicated to what they do. And their purpose, main purpose, is to save lives, save property. There's a statement made in this document that the volunteers are to be so bold in that to Natchez Fire. To me, having been in the fire service or been associated with it for God knows how many years, and to a lot of volunteers right now, that's very demeaning, insulting, and almost offensive. I can show you six, I can tell you six firefighters that are volunteers right now, including myself, that have a hundred and seventy-five years of service. Show me these six firefighters with Natchez, this day in time, with the turnover that they're having, with as much training and experience. These volunteers leave their families. When they commit to this, they leave their families on Christmas morning with their opening presents. Thanksgiving dinner. Noon of night. No questions asked. They do this twenty-four-seven. While Natchez Fire works a twenty-four-hour shift, goes home at forty-eight. Nothing against them, that's my opinion, but I'm pretty. We have helped. The volunteers have helped Natchez many times with major fires that they've had in the city. With great appreciation and respect. This document basically does away with that with some of the wording in it. It doesn't give credit where credit is due. Let me just, just give you some fire insurance ratings. If this continues. Let me back up. We've got four fire districts designated by the rating bureau in this county. Lake Montrose, Lidderoe, Kingston, and Falls to Mount. One of those districts is a Class Seven. The rest of them are Class Nine. The rest of the county outside of those districts are Class Ten. Ten being the highest rating. Your fire insurance is more expensive in those areas than it is in Class Seven. We had one instance, and it happened to be a volunteer firefighter. His insurance last year, he got a statement, it had gone up three hundred dollars a year. He lived in District Seven, which has the lowest fire district rating. After some conversations with, excuse, his insurance company, that got straightened out. They thought the insurance rating had gone up. And he got verification that it hadn't. We've also had some conversations with several homeowners who dropped their fire insurance because the ratings had gone up to where they couldn't afford it. My point, with a minimum amount of expense and effort by this board, and fully for, fully supportive volunteer fire departments, insurance ratings can drop and be a money saver for all homeowners. Here's a very good point. With Natchez Fire taking the primary responsibility for fire suppression or fire protection in this county, that does insurance ratings no good. Because you've got volunteer fire departments stationed throughout the county. Those who are in volunteer fire departments, with the ability that they have, and would be fully supportive, would keep those insurance ratings up, or even go lower, with proper support. Here's a very good point I wanna make. Volunteer's responsibility under this document. Now, this is shocking. They're responsible, volunteers are responsible for water supply. Think about that. That's a good idea. Need water. All they gotta do is pull up to the fire scene and tell Natchez Fire the water's in that truck. It's your job to get it out. We brought it to you. Or all we gotta do is tell you, the closest fire hydrant you have it is about a quarter mile down the road. With a little blue sticker in the middle of the road. Y'all can go get it. We're doing our job. They need a brush truck. Okay? Brush truck got hundred fifty gallons on it. For grass fire, woods fire. There it is now. Y'all get it out. Basically, that's what it says. We supply the water. We get that, we bring it to them, their job is utilizing it. I go back to the, uh, situation where a volunteer fire department or volunteer chief hears a call on the radio that they're sending engine bores up there in the county. They take the initiative, get in the truck, drive over to the scene, and Natchez Fire hasn't got there yet. What are they gonna do? Under this document, we're supporting it, remember? We can't attack the fire. We have to sit there and wait until Natchez Fire gets there. Y'all think for one minute that landlord's gonna be hacking that homeowner? You think for one minute that's not gonna be a lawsuit?
Now, that doesn't mean they're gonna take over when they get there. You're saying we can't do anything?
Right.
That doesn't make sense. Um, cause I don't know if firefighters that ever wore a uniform that wouldn't attack that fire.
I don't deny that, not at all. I, you know? Whether anybody told me not to do the doc, I would, okay? And I don't know, like you, I don't know if firefighters would do it. But technically, under this document, Natchez Fire could have an issue with it. Let me, uh, let me go on just a minute. Here's another example. We decided among ourselves that technically we're gonna take take the responsibility and do what we gotta do, if it was to ever happen. There's a trailer. It's inhabited by an individual not far from Lidderoe Station. He's on oxygen. He's injured. If we were there, we would take action on the fire. Natchez Fire cannot get to that scene in less than fifteen minutes. Remember, that house trailer's gonna be fully involved in ten minutes. Okay? If money was handed right, with the right intent, and managed properly, we could have people, have people on the scene in two minutes. That's just bottom line. Okay? I could go on and on and on, but I wanna mention a couple of things, and then I'll finish up with what I gotta say. One more point I wanna make about these grass fires, woods fires. As we call them, technically, they're wildland fires. Natchez doesn't have, does not have the equipment, or the training, to address anything over a quarter of an acre to an acre. Under the right conditions, that fire could be twenty acres in ten minutes. Low humidity, high winds, or any wind at all, under the right fuel conditions, you're gonna have a problem. Mr. Wilson, you got a plantation out there on Lidderoe Road.
I do.
Three or four, three or four, three or four hundred acres, maybe. Okay, I don't know how big it is, but it's big, okay? Somebody built a house back in there off Pickering Road. If you're waiting on Natchez Fire to put that fire out, that house is probably gonna catch on fire. They're trained in structure fires, they're not trained in wildland fires. Recent fire on Tower Road. Could've burned a camp down. I got there at a very, through the Forest Commission radio system. Long before Natchez did. Folks, that was two days they were out there. One spot. And I had Natchez put some water on it. In five minutes, when that fire hit that road, it's like the water was never there. That's how bad, that bad, that bad the fire was, okay? Y'all had a burn ban that you tried to get implemented back in the spring? It was turned down by the Forest Commission? Because there were no fires reported to the Forest Commission, who's the primary agency. Has been have, there were no fires reported in that county, and they had to turn these down. I knew better. Mr. Bradford knew better. I made a couple of phone calls and got that situation straightened out. I had told folks time and time again, it got to be reported, those fires have got to be reported at Forest Commission. And I've been completely told. Let's don't get in that situation, okay? It will hurt you in the long run. Somebody's gonna lose your property, somebody's gonna lose a house, because of it. Let me conclude in saying this, and I'm just gonna read my statement right here. It's a real, it's a real simple fix. You're going into next year's budget. You can set up the funds to maintain and fully support these volunteers with the money that you're getting from the state. It won't cost the county any other dollars unless something major happens, okay? A truck gets wrecked, or something like that. The insurance rebate money will go a long way to building fire or protecting the fire. It will maintain and repair the trucks. Let me stop right there. Trucks. Folks, we driving trucks that are over twenty years old. We recently replaced, replaced some tires on those trucks that were twenty years old. You gonna drive around in a truck that's got eight hundred, a thousand gallons of water in it? With twenty-year-old tires? Come on, guys, give me a break. That, that's so unsafe, it's not even funny. Let me, that, repair, maintain and repair the trucks that are desperate and need to work, we got two or three that are completely down right now. It will ensure these departments that have the needed manpower to respond to all emergencies that occur, including assisting Natchez Fire, if need be, inside the CO events. The next statement is critical. I would also suggest that mutual agreements be developed with the appropriate departments to ensure that there's no misunderstanding as to each entity's responsibility. It's just that simple. The attempt of insurance rebate money is to support fire protection. And in the case of Adams County, it's not to supplement Natchez Fire Department's budget. Natchez Fire gets their own insurance rebate money, the city does. The county does. You add the two together, the property, the same distance and estimated, that's two-thirds of their salary plus. It's not costing anybody anything. You're wrecked. I'll answer any questions that I've got, that you got. I've got packets for each one of the supervisors with my presentation, a copy of the, uh, interlocal, and a copy of the law regarding, uh, insurance, insurance rebate money that comes into town.
In the future, uh, when we're negotiating contract, we'd, we'd love to have you read and go along with us, look over it. For those very reasons there, there's a couple of things, I think some of them, uh, may be getting nitpicked on a little bit, because we know enough, if, if something breaks out, that whoever shows up first gonna take care of whatever they can do, as fast as they can do it. But I understand what you're saying about they have total control of it and, and will use that authority. But even though you've got firefighters that have that much experience, I understand, uh, your problem with that statement.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Yeah?
It actually is, they take charge upon arrival at the scene and not, so obviously your volunteers would be glad to be there. And that's just put in there, so there's one person that's in.
Did, uh?
I've had, I've had them get mad at me on fire recently because of all the parts Mr. Heaven had. They got mad and had some pretty rotten things to say to me, and I don't appreciate it.
Uh, control and containment are the most important parts of that, so it's, whatever sources you have available, that's what you call them, okay? That, that'd be pretty simple in my, my, uh. Were any of the laws, uh, about the volunteer, or legislation passed, volunteer firefighters for more money or anything like that, Brad, that you know of? You know, they have some stuff in the legislation to try to help volunteer firefighters, maybe pay them for their gas or, or something, but it.
Yeah, they did, they just waited to, to come to the state fire marshal to push it. It's been there, it's just we had to use it. It's not, it's another way, they say it's not like you paying them, but it's like a compensation or something, it's worth, worth it. I think Scott, you made that there, probably.
The word they use in the law is remuneration.
Yeah, cause you, volunteers can't be.
I understand, but I, I thought they were gonna at least try to help them a little bit with, uh.
There was, there was some legislation in regard to retirement stuff. Now, where that's gone, I didn't check the fire marshal's files, but, uh, I didn't keep up with that particular display of place, cause I'm already going to retire.
Well, I'm, I got some stuff I'm gonna introduce y'all to, at least on your turnout here, you'll be much safer with it on there than what, what you're currently using.
Now, Mr. President, I'd be glad to sit down with anybody on any of this and have them do whatever they need to do.
I, I appreciate you calling attention to the volunteer firefighters and what they do and what they're lacking in. Now, some of it we don't know about, but we're gonna, like you said, we've got a budget coming up and, uh, things are gonna change a little bit. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
And I've, I've got these packets for you.
Okay. You've noticed that Mr. Gaines has arrived. All right. You're hot, air conditioning's on. Oh, he had your man covered up. Mr. Stone, you on?
Sure.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, uh, as you know, I'm Joey Fur, the landscape architect that, uh, did the work on the ball field. I have a couple of items for you this morning. First one is, uh, a request for the approval of the final payment for the sports lighting, uh, installation. This is for the Southern Electric Corporation. This project was approved as finally complete November fifth. And at the, the last time I came before you and asked to approve this, there were a couple of questions about a couple of lights that were not coming on. After that meeting, I went out and verified with, uh, uh, everyone that those lights were in fact, uh, working, they just were turned off at the time, and, uh, I think they've been turned back on. And I have not been able to get back to a meeting to present this to you, uh, to, uh, for your, your final improvement. Uh, but the amount of the final invoice is fifty thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, this will make the project paid in full. Uh, it is due, and I recommend payment.
Okay, you heard the request? All right, Middleton.
Say.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
My question is, have anybody, uh, with his county, uh, been out there to verify, uh, everything that he's saying? Robert, have you been out there?
I have not. I think Johnny rode out there with you that day.
Yeah.
We met with that day.
Yes, we met with Johnny, uh, I met with Johnny that day, we looked at both these lights and, uh, the switch, he knew the switch was off, he went right to it and said, yeah, the switch is turned off. And, uh, I informed him as the, you know, the safety lights, and they didn't be on, he said he'd leave them on, so they, they all worked, and it had some to worry about.
All right, any more to go?
And this is our last final payment?
This is the final payment for the installation, that's, that's right.
All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'm gonna vote aye on that, but from now on, uh, I just thank whoever, uh, with this county that's going out to verify what he's saying, need to be at the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, I just assumed that maybe Mr. Middleton or Rod.
I know Johnny rode out that day, because.
I know Johnny met with him, I know the lights, our question will fix the next day, cause I rode by myself and checked on them.
All right.
Uh, the second item I have is I've been asked to provide, uh, proposal or contract for professional services to design, uh, both the toilet room, uh, and, uh, the renovations and additions to the locker rooms at Chester Willis Field. Uh, we originally talked about doing this as one project, uh, believe because of the, the special loan that you're getting, we need to divide, uh, to separate this into two projects. We need to divide, uh, to separate this into two projects, which, which this contract does. Uh, it's a, it's the standard contract, standard AIA document, the same document that we use for, uh, the, the first phase of the work that has been completed out there. Uh, this, this contract would be a total fee of forty thousand dollars, uh, which is twenty thousand dollars for phase one, which would be the toilet rooms, and twenty thousand dollars for phase two. Which is the, uh, which is the, uh, the locker room improvements and some facade improvements to the building. Uh, they would, both, both projects would be done under this one contract, but they would be two separate, uh, construction packages, two separate bid packages. Uh, and these services would cover from design through construction administration completion of the work. And they would both be done separately, uh, and, uh, the, the, I derive the fee, uh, I, the first project, we use a, a sliding scale, um, but on this project, because the, the loan will only pay up to eight percent, uh, I just capped my fees at eight percent of the, of the estimate of the, of the work. Uh, and, uh, it, so it's a lump sum of, of, of the, the forty thousand dollars, which is eight percent of five hundred, which is, uh, the, the, the budget for the total two projects. Uh, the, it, it, the, the sliding fee would have been a higher percentage rate because of the size of the project, but I'm willing to do it for, uh, for that, because we already got, you know, some stuff starting on this.
All right, uh, have you looked that over slower, will that work for real?
Not, but it's a standard AIA, AIA contract, I think we have a standard addendum for that, I'll shoot it over to you.
Okay.
I think you approved it last time anyways.
Yes, and I, I had provided a draft just in case the board wanted any, um, uh, any, you know, changes, slight, slight changes to it, uh, but it, it, you know, proved.
And Lynette is the one getting that grant, she's okay with that, the way we're going now?
She's the one that asked us.
Has she seen it though?
Yes, she, she has it, Mary. She's not, she's not.
Yes.
I'm gonna ask the, uh, turnout question, uh. I understand what we're doing, uh, is this, uh, legal, do, do we have to bid this out, or we're just gonna give it to whoever we wanna give it to?
Yeah, so architecture services, you don't have to bid out.
Thank you, sir.
I was in communication last week with Lynette and Mr. Joey, actually a couple of times, we talked, but Lynette, uh, asked him to come today because she had been looking at the county, so she does know all this going on. She did bring it before the board, I think last meeting or two, I think Mr. Gray asked about the percentage and, and that's all we were waiting on, since by the.
Correct.
One more question, uh, if you don't mind, uh, I read the email, I'm looking for it now, and my concern is, uh, the sewage hookup, uh, from what I read, uh, don't nobody know who gonna be responsible for the sewage hookup? So how are we gonna deal with it?
Well, I will coordinate that, but at this point, I could not put that into my scope because, uh, we don't know what the, uh, we don't know if the, if this, if town is gonna provide that hookup, there's some, some talk about tying into a manhole that is closer to it. Otherwise, we may have to send it out to the, to the front, which is gonna require force main and probably boring. So, because that's so, out, out, up, up in the air, it's probably gonna be a, a project that would, would be over the, the, the two, uh, grand dollars. We just don't know yet, so I didn't wanna put that in my scope and then have that mess up the, uh, the, because it, some of this may be done by, if the town, Natchez provides there, they're probably gonna want their, their city engineer to make that, uh, to make that, you know, typically, they have engineers that they like to, to work with. Uh, most municipalities have engineers that they like to do there, all of their sewer work are, are, you know, which, so that's why I exclude, so this will take, this, this will design and take the sewer, uh, I think I put ten feet outside of the building, I will help coordinate how we get that connection made, because ultimately, we have to have that connection, uh, before. We just don't know where it's gonna be right now, so there's no way to quantify it in this particular scope.
So let me ask a question, uh. That's gonna be an additional caution, right?
Not, not for me.
I'm talking about for you, I'm talking about for us.
No, I mean, it, it, it will be, it, if, if there is a, a professional engineer that has to be hired to do that, that would be outside of my scope, sir.
So boy, uh, do you think that we need, uh, whoever gonna run that sewage to wherever they gonna run it, need to be at the table on the front end and not the back end? Because once we finish this project, we just gonna have a building sitting out there with, with, with no way to use it because you're not gonna have sewage. So don't you think we need to get the city involved, or, or whatever the case on the front end?
Yeah.
Is it, uh, we don't know where it's at, or, or we don't, it's so old?
They don't.
City don't know?
It's so old that nobody knows exactly where it's at?
They pulled all the maps, there's no.
So the water work don't know?
No. They've been out there, they can't find it.
So, so now we got another situation, now we're gonna build a building. We, we, don't nobody know if we can even hook it up?
Well, yeah, we can hook it up under the street to the manhole at the safe room. That'd be the easiest hookup, being bored under the road.
So we gotta go through the city to do that?
Well, I mean, it's, it's Natty Water, Natchez Water Works, whatever.
So don't you think we need to kind of help?
I mentioned it, that we're gonna need some help, but.
I, I, that's one of the first things we will do, is try to figure out, I mean, where, where we can, if, we can't get, we can't get a certificate, uh, an occupancy certificate if we don't have the sewer hooked up, so first thing that we need to do as part of the project is figure that out, and we'll, we'll help do that, we just can't physically prepare those drawings and, and do that, that, that's, that's, uh, that's outside of our, you know, town role and expertise. So I excluded that specifically from, from our scope. The, you know, the, the town may be able to just do it with their in-house people. It's a gravity line.
The, the current, the current restrooms go somewhere.
They go somewhere, they just.
But, and they don't have a way to feed the line down and have radio attached to it and find out where the line goes?
They, they put a, I think they put a camera in it at some point and it went to a point and then it, it kind of, it stopped. It's an old line.
It could be crushed.
It's got a lot of crush, uh, and, and they know the direction it goes, but apparently it takes a turn somewhere beyond where the camera could go. Uh, and, and so, uh, it, it's, you know, it's very old and it just, it needs to be abandoned, it's not, it's currently, it is currently still draining the two restrooms that are there. It's not gonna be the, you know, very unlikely that the capacity for, for these rooms, it would be, it would be, it would be silly to, to try to hook this up to that line because we know it's very, very, barely functioning as it is, so we don't wanna add that capacity to it.
Okay.
So where is the swimming pool, uh, restroom going to?
Wherever some main sewer tap, they just, they can do it, just tap into it, and the city can tell you where the swimming pool and where Brad building ties to it, it's gotta be a sewer main there, they can put a tap. Like, if you act a bore to it or get, you know, it might be.
They know where the stuff across the street is, but they just don't know where the line that comes from the passers at the stadium diet.
So, Mr. President, are you gonna get with somebody in the city, uh, the county administrator, how we gonna do this, because I don't wanna building, buildings?
Well, we, we know we have some, some options, but we're, we're gonna have to figure out which one's gonna be the most viable, and it's gonna be a count up to them, so we'll, he'll talk to them.
I'll, I'll be glad.
All right, all right. Yes.
Just keep in mind, the sewage at the safe room, they got a special pump that they use, because that building need to be self-sustaining. If you tie the thing else to it, it may back the safe room up, so you gotta be careful, they got special leaders pumped out in those manholes to get it away from the building. Because they got it on separate system, so I can, I can give them diagrams, we have tanks underground out there. If they need diagrams for safes, if they wanna plug it to it, make sure they don't rupture none underground when he tags it around.
We'll keep that in mind. All right, need a motion. Uh, done a lot of discussing earlier, but we haven't done a motion. No, we ain't had a motion on that. You're making a motion? Okay.
Do what?
To approve the. I need a second. Second by Mr. Middleton, any more discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carried? Thank you, sir.
Scott, we can talk, and I can update, and I'll send you a sign company one, so I can.
Yeah, I'll email you the addendum.
Yeah.
It should be the same words.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Do you have the document that you can email him just to look at, or is it just a?
It's drawn, I can give it to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I can drop, drop off the DB.
Oh, you don't have, you don't have.
Scott, we need a motion, go public hearing for these.
I can get Robbie to get it to. Okay. Okay, I did that. Robbie, can I check this?
We're gonna do that as an annual report. Go to the departmental. Persetta?
Doing it.
Persetta's department, oh, there, I'm sorry, it's looking back there. Uh, what's the departmental report? Go ahead.
I'm just here to, to ask for, um, a leave for vacation that I planned last year, week first, and I was approved for it. And this is like, I played in January, it's approved, that I had played on this year, I had already paid for it and everything, and I already got the paper for, um, the senior senior to me, so I could, um, fill it out to, to you guys, to the doctor.
Okay. How, who's gonna run that?
Shagari going, uh, with it is tomorrow, we have interviews that they're doing, um, and I already have Shagari, I got two, uh, summer workers here working, so they were giving them, you know, situated how to do a lot of stuff, and Shagari said she was helping.
Interviews, we do the interviews.
Yeah, they, uh, what's they, they, uh, they have.
But next time.
I thought they.
Yeah, the board does the interviews.
We're narrowing it down, sorry.
Oh, okay. Okay, but you'll, you'll be around?
Yeah, we're just narrowing it down, sorry.
And when she's gone, you'll be around to kind of monitor what's going on, okay? So you got the paperwork?
Yes, I do.
Can you tell me again, because I'm.
It's gonna be, uh, June the twenty third to the twenty seventh. Coming out, did you have? Um, I didn't.
We had, um, probably eighty, and then we called it down to twenty.
Was it eighty?
Uh, fifty, I'm sorry, fifty, we called it down to twenty.
Fifteen?
Fifty.
Fifty. Fifty, wow, fifty, we called it down to twenty, and we picked the top five, and so we were just calling a couple of them, weren't interested anymore. So we went through the, and the, the top twenty, see if there was anybody else that caught our eye again.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Before she go, I just wanna, uh, say what I said at last board meeting, we, we are in the process of doing a budget, and, uh, just like she just said, she have some high school kids doing whatever down there. I think we need to look into, uh, some of those kids that get out of school at twelve o'clock and looking for a job. We can hire some of those kids from one to five, and it'll cut down on the benefits, the perks and all that kind of stuff. And every department in this county need to look at trying to do it, that's my opinion.
Uh, need a motion to approve her leave. Moved by Ms. Hutchins, taken by Mr. Gaines, any more discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carried, just need that paperwork. Next, on departmental reports.
Good morning. Um, we're coming, 'cause we did, we finally did, um, we got the pool open, we got the pool running. Um, we've been doing good, we have a few mishaps, but we kind of worked them, um, we did, um, we spoke about the senior citizens, we went to the city meeting, they were trying to get in and, you know, feed in around it. So we were able to get things arranged, we, um, they paid their monthly membership fees and we got everything situated. Now, they did come to us about the heater and the pool, which, um, we did wrestle there, we all were there speaking with them, and like, he explained to them this. It'll take three, like, three whole days to actually heat the pool up, you'll have to call the gas company and a plumber to make sure everything is going good. And they were talking about, you know, they do the six to the eight, so they had a problem with the, um, it being kind of cooler in the morning, which we, um, kind of told them, you know, we understand, but cutting the pool on is just like, if you cook it on, if you cook it on Saturday and Sunday and Monday, if they come Tuesday, they mean the heater will be, um, or swimming lessons, they'll bring a pool out, which is eighty and ninety degrees outside, which there was kind of a conflict, because there'll be hot in the pool and hot in it, so that kind of, we kind of ran it to a hunk of it, but we were trying to explain to them, the, I don't think it's gonna be possible, so there might be, we told them that it's with the weather and how it gets warm in the evening, like, cook it on for two hours and then cook it off, he explains to them, like, it'll take three whole days because of the capacity of that pool to heat it up.
I'm not sure we could afford to heat the pool, uh, to be honest with you.
Not for two hours?
Every person I've ever seen that had a pool heater, used it for one season, and when they got their gas bill, they never ran it again, because it's so expensive. Uh, the only other way to warm a pool is to have those balls or something, I mean, those black balls, and, you know, when it's not being used, uh, you can warm a pool up that way.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll look into that one, but we, we, Ray stopped him telling us how long it took, and then, you know, just doing it for two hours and then taking it off because of the sun coming out of.
You're gonna bust your budget on that, that, are you gonna get that gas bill and you're gonna be calling, visiting and say, I don't know how we're gonna pay this, or, or, or the city's gonna be complaining?
Yeah, but we worked everything out as far as incoming, the, the membership, we, we, so like, the visitor abilities, we did have one, um, we had a Caitlin Temples that we did hire. And, um, Mary Russ was Russian, and they both told us, so one of them had a drive, so she was like due to the drive from Tensaw here that she couldn't work, and Caitlin, um, she was. The schedule and her finding another job, so, um, we had two, some people, we did have one of our, um, students that we had from last year that was trying to return, so we're taking those two off and.
Which, which two are you taking off?
Um, Mary Russian and Caitlin. Caitlin Temples.
Mary Russian, Caitlin Temples. Okay, but you haven't got their, uh, got their paperwork yet to hire on?
No, we didn't have it for, for anything.
Um, no, it's a new pick, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we did have, um, the Cola Mastic, she worked with us last year.
He's been there for Thanksgiving, too.
I know that kid, he's a good kid.
So he's trying to help it.
Okay, y'all got anything else?
I have some, when are your summer, um, swimming lessons gonna start?
All right, our summer sessions actually start this week is the first station.
This week?
This week, but tomorrow.
Tuesday.
And doing every two weeks up until August the first. We, um, they were off their first week for the water supply, so every two weeks until August the first, um, one hour each session, every Tuesday to Friday, and it's sixty dollars for the heat.
Sixty dollars, and it's stayed for two weeks or one week?
It's for two weeks.
For two weeks?
Are those all filled up already, or, I knew last time you say were pretty full?
The majority. Majority, not the first station, but the rest of, because Tensaw.
Yeah, big book, like, I think it's like fifteen.
Fifteen, I don't know.
They went from Tensaw and they pay for snacks, they pay for hot dogs, they pay for everything, and we just.
We have cadets, the Adams County, um, their cadets, they start on the tenth, they're gonna be Tuesdays and Thursdays for an hour, eight thirty to nine thirty. Um, we have B and J youth group with Ms. Diane, um, she's coming over this week, and they're going, um, an hour a day, um, she knows some small, um, they have some of some small children, and we have, um, John who's.
She breaks the.
Who's ranked, who's on her swim lessons as well for the week, so we have a few things going. And we have the dates for the swimming lessons, the first session is, um, June the third through the thirteenth, the second session is the seventeenth through the twenty first. Um, third session is July the eighth through the eighteenth, and the fourth session is July the twenty seventh through the first of August.
Okay, I have the Oasis, they sponsored, I think it was twelve kids.
Twelve children.
And they sponsored kids that made it to their grade six, so we already got this list out and we have them put in for some listings.
As well.
How does somebody sign up for someone?
They usually, um, we don't do over the phone because we've had instances where someone is like, hey, can I get the eight to nine o'clock, but we have someone that comes in like before them to actually pay for it. So we usually like tell them that we have availability in which session, but they have to come in and actually practice the sign in, because we pay mishap with someone else, I don't think they have a session with someone come in person to actually pay. So we usually like tell them that we have availability in which session, but they have to come in and actually have to sign in, cause we pay mishap with someone else, I don't think they have a session, but someone come in person to actually pay for it. So we usually do in person, and they tell us what day and what session that they will go to.
Okay, you have two sessions, that's eight to twelve and?
No, we have eight to nine.
Eight to nine?
Nine to ten.
Ten thirty to eleven thirty.
We get a lifeguard, so we, and then ten thirty to eleven thirty, and eleven thirty to twelve thirty, and we open for regular hours at one o'clock. One at six.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So the new one that you have coming aboard, when, when do you anticipate that person starting?
Oh, how long? Well, so it's, we get this part for.
So that's what I was gonna say, that's, that's, that's what I was gonna ask, is the paperwork.
Okay, you have it with you?
Yeah, I have paperwork, and we have any signs, anything.
Okay, you can bring it on up. Uh, is that all y'all had today?
Yes.
Okay, thank y'all.
While they bringing the paperwork up, you can bring it up, I just gotta come in, I, I, I think it's a great deal, a great idea with this swimming lesson, cause. Swimming is a, a life skill, and I think everybody need, need how to swim, but I kind of feel for the seniors, and I seen it at the lab, that, uh, indoor pool is, is a different animals for, for outdoor pool. For us to heating up the pool, I, I knew that was gonna be different, so I knew that was gonna be a problem. Thank you.
Ricky, you ever been around a pool that somebody was heating? You hear those, you heard those burners kick on?
Uh, Mr. President.
It sounded like freight train coming.
I'm from the old school, my dad ran the swimming pool in the shower, at the swimming pool was so cold, we had to take a shower. By the time you take a shower and get in the water, it felt like the water was warm.
Oh, Indian trip. Thank y'all.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, I need a, uh, is it just this one or both of them?
That's, yeah.
That is just.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you sharing his, um, life, he can tell us.
Okay.
Y'all still, uh, communicating with the chef to cover where they, and.
They, they have that coming, and Mr. Mitchell even came and just sat in on they.
Alright, I need a motion for Lakota Bostic, uh, rehire maintenance outside gate worker of two fifty-nine. Moved by Mr. Gaines.
Sir.
Taken by Mr. Middleton. Any more discussion? All in favor? Uh, any, any names? Motion carried. Alright, departmental report, who's next?
Alright, good morning.
Morning.
Uh, I just have, uh, when I, uh, when I, uh, were at the two, I, uh, following inspection for EWP C zero four four at Rockland Lane, Brooklyn Drive and Church Road. That'll be held tomorrow or eight AM, um, following that, we'll have a punch this item, and in the next four, we now presenting their final, uh, pay estimate, continuing on and completing those punches. And the last thing, the next thing I have is the reimbursement reform for also for EWP, um, I got an email back from NRCS stating that they have a new form that they want to execute. I have revised, I believe I have revised both, uh, reimbursement number one and number two, and submitted to the machine, get your signature on it. You borrowed, they borrowed our approval signatures, I just need to, uh, give you the form on that, and then I will submit those documents to NRCS. The last item I have is.
Mr., before, before you, before you go on and have to get, uh, the last rain, uh, it, it's real bad, it's a lot.
So, we went out, we, we went out and we took photos the next day after the last rain, and so that's one item that we're gonna discuss tomorrow during final inspection.
Have you been out, have you been out since that tree fell?
No.
There's a tree fell out there and tore some wires out the house, and part of the tree fell off and, until the, uh, thing out there, man, it, 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 it's bad out there.
You been out there, Robert?
Yes, sir.
Is that one of the ones y'all were going for? To do the check list on?
Inspection and. Yes.
Okay.
And then, the last thing I have is the state aid projects.
Okay.
I provided everyone an estimate, uh, projects, additional projects, you know, this, this facility based on the annual inspection, the state aid, uh, the annual riding road. You can terminate once, for the, um, one of these sites is based on previous projects that we have, that they have had state aid. Um, so, you don't have to do all of these, you're gonna do the entire termination. Get you a six point in between these, if you have a certain segment of road that you want to. If you ever come across a segment of road that does not have a previous project on it, state aid is gonna require you to do a survey on it, you have to make sure that that segment of roadways, even though they're on state aid road, get up to, up to state aid standards. And if it's not, then the correction will have to be made to bring up state aid standards in order to use state aid money on that project.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Let me ask you a question. Uh, what's going to, Mr. Dollar and look forward? Martin Town Road. From Maryville. Ain't that in between where those, uh, residents are having the drainage problem? Ain't that church?
Yes.
And, uh, okay, uh.
Yeah.
It rained so hard the other day, I decided to get up about five o'clock and, and ride out there. And I got some videos, that water crossed the whole street on Martin Town Road. And cars was just going slow, I mean, it's all the way across, when you pass that church, and when both sides where the water don't have nowhere to go, that water is all the way across the road, and it, and it was kind of deep, and it's dangerous. So, I don't know what can be done, I know something need to be done, and it might help alleviate what's going on with the church, with most of.
You definitely damn right.
And what?
And Thomas Smith.
And Thomas Smith, that's just my opinion.
It will authorize us, we can do a drainage assessment area, or require some additional survey work to get control and elevation, as well as doing any drainage areas, you know, drainage area. That's the authorization, the board authorization from the board to allow us to do that work.
Let me ask you another question. Uh, I know ain't nobody doing them for free. Since we didn't budget this in this budget, uh, and we working on a budget, uh, could we possibly put that in the next budget? Cause I know we probably don't have money to do it right now, or do we have the money to do it?
What the project you're talking about?
What you just said.
So we're gonna make certain this is, uh, try to figure out what's going on, and we get a problem.
Yeah, so if we get with Mitzi, and he sends Mitzi the amount, what we're looking for, we can see whether we can fit it into this budget or next budget, also depends on when it will become due. So, cause if it was, someone was due in this fiscal year, we might pull from some source, and then we'll run it through the next fiscal year, so.
I'm gonna write a proposal and apply to you next one.
Thank you, sir. Uh. I just never in my life realized the impact of water. And if you got water coming, and you can't get rid of it, 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 it's just real dangerous, and, and, uh, if water is softening up all our soil, and all these trees are falling, and, and, and I, I just think if water has somewhere to go besides just standing in place, and, and, and making this soil so soft, these trees gonna fall, thank you, Mr. President.
Do you have anything else?
No, I just wanna make sure y'all have this list.
Yeah.
So you know, what savings you all want to just program for, um, for water reason.
As.
Okay, all the projects together total a whole lot of money though.
Well, that's what I was saying, as.
And we have, what, six mil, four million dollars?
You need to look over, and what is the total monies they got to spend?
Four point one million dollars, I'm gonna do that.
We always do that, we tell them.
Out of, out of that four point one million dollars, make sure you back out, backtrack, uh, the engineering fees, which is twelve percent, and the five percent for the tenants that's required.
Let me ask a question to this board president. Do we wanna spend a whole four point one million? I feel like we should, because we're gonna have more, uh, state aid money coming up.
We gotta spend.
So, the state aid money, you don't have to spend, that's how we be feeding those bridge, bridge funds, how can we spend? State aid money is highly encouraged for this spending.
So what if we don't, what is the consequences for not spending?
At this moment, there, there is no consequence, at this moment, there are any talks of, and.
Well, well, this is what I heard, maybe I heard the wrong thing. If counties are not utilizing their funds, then they could take those funds and give it to somebody else.
So that is for, that is for bridge projects.
Oh.
Yes, so right now, if you don't use your LSPP money, then you take your LSPP money and put it into a pool, and it's somebody who has bridges that ready to be constructed, that money can't go to that, the money.
So is that the money we talking about, they can't take that?
That's state aid money now, not right now, but they're getting conversations about doing the same thing for state aid money.
But that's what I'm talking.
But see what, my understanding is, if you do not use the state aid money, that they will give you less state aid money the next time. Is that, that's a conversation that's been said too.
It's a calculation, I don't know if anything, like, you give that money, because.
Well, they be talking about that on Fridays, when we be listening to, uh, MAS.
Yeah.
Supervisor Association, they be talking about that on the meeting on Friday, that's, that's how we get our information.
I verify, would you do my future engineer? So I hope for sure that state aid money does not, at this point in time, it's present among, you cannot take, they're having conversations doing the same thing.
And I guess that's something we'll find out in upcoming conference too.
Go ahead, Mr. Gaines.
So, this is Robert and Mr. Uh, Ford, alright, the sage field, the, you know, the, uh, the bridge money coming off of, where they got the box covered it. I don't know if you noticed where they hid the box cover in the rock pit, if you come down on the north side after you come off the D curve, uh, we done lost at least fifty to sixty foot of the backside of that project. And instead of coming toward the road, and I think that's something that need to be addressed right now with all the rain, because if, you know, if you lose that front, and, and, uh, as a matter of fact, you familiar with, on the opposite side where the drain is coming, we have some, uh.
Rear raft.
Some rear raft done went, and it's starting to undercut, so if you would, uh, if it's okay with the board, there's something need to be, uh, addressed on that end, because it'll actually close the road, and it's not at that point right now. But if we can look at it on a state aid project, you know, we can probably do it a whole lot cheaper before we get in the fog.
Can you say a seventeen percent of the funds?
Yes, five, ten, thirteen, twelve, ten.
Five percent, ten percent.
So I just, I would, uh, that's something that, uh, I've been walking for the last past couple of years, and, and kind of stayed back for a while, but later I see it's actually with all the rain, it's starting to come forth.
And I have to make, when we come to projects, have to make sure that funding is eligible for a particular funding.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I say we can start to check now, okay, just, well, and you can, um, probably give with Mr. Dollar, you can give with myself, and we can look, you can kind of look at it, but, uh, I'm pretty much sure Mr. Dollar will be familiar with what we are talking about, I mean, of what I'm talking about. So whenever we can get a chance, we can get in, we can look at it.
Alright, appreciate it.
If you got time, if it's meeting quick, it's something that you can look at and go out, if not today, we.
I, I, I can't, I can't get it right.
You have to get them off of inspection.
Okay. That might be.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Rick, Richard, you need to get out of here, you need to.
I did.
Okay, who's next?
Good morning, boy. Uh, Sam, I'm out of veteran service office for the county. Uh, I got two things I wanna talk to you about, the first thing is the, uh, the, uh, the veterans staying down, which will be Saturday at the safe room, from, uh, eleven to three o'clock. If, uh, you guys can come by and, and, uh, just show the veterans a little support, showing things that will be feed you, good week.
Saturday?
Saturday?
Saturday.
At what time?
From, uh, eleven to three o'clock.
Okay.
And the second thing, I, I gave you a package for the, uh, national convention of BSO, it's gonna be held in, uh, Louisville, Kentucky. I already have the prices and everything in the package, uh, for the reservation and.
Yeah, I need a motion for his trial. Moved by Mr. Middleton, taken by Ms. Hudson. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
And, uh, that's all I have for the board, unless they have any questions for me.
I think you need to sign this, uh, definitely need to sign this, uh. You're welcome over here and sign this. Who's next?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, Cameron Laird, he's office, I have a board word here for a correction for our social security number for someone who is not able to make the in-year home stand, this is one of those where the letter went out from the Department of Revenue. They have informed me that we have it till the first meeting, and all of us can obviously correct it with board word, so this is one I need corrected.
Okay. Um, you heard the request? Moved by Mr. Gaines.
Mr. Gray.
Uh, Mr. Gray, you second it? Okay, Mr. Gaines second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
So do, we approve it, uh, so do we need to name, do we need the names, or?
I'm gonna have to name them.
Huh?
It's all over.
It's all over, okay, well, that's all I have to make sure we, we stand line, okay.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any names? Motion carried. Is that all you had in the sentence? Oh, okay. Something might be mine.
I think water will look like it might be.
Go ahead, Mr. Gray.
Good morning, boy. Brad, Brad, I have a chance to give a report, I got a couple things this morning.
Go ahead. Oh, listen. All very exposed, went out of business, and they don't know where to send these to, I'm gonna try, try to tell them where they go. Go ahead.
I got a couple things for you, uh, first, uh, weather report, we had some weather come to our area, uh, trees and stuff down our lines or houses, uh, so we was able to get red cross, have some of the victims out there experienced, uh, you know, they damaged to their property. We also want to encourage everybody that, if they get damaged to their property, report to our office, you know, don't, don't say, even if you got any issue, report to us, because we have to keep a tab of that, and see what the damage is, anything we get, enough declaration order, we can do that, if we get any, any other state, counties, counties get damaged, and get a declaration with the state, our county can't be included in it, but if you don't put that in there, we can't be included in that, as far as I'm aware, so if you get the damage, we have the storm, just call our office and take pictures, make sure you get that information out.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Bradford, what number you wanna go?
They got my six zero one, uh, five, six zero one, four four two, seven zero two one. Also, we also have it on our county website, that they go in and report that damage, it's called self-report, they can go on the, on the county website, and you let them say it, and we just had to come out and verify that.
Thank you.
One thing, the road department, who does, Gaines, uh, they was out, uh, during the last storm, and everybody know now, these storms, uh, they, the weather services are trying to pick up, uh, where they came, uh, with all the cuts and stuff, it's gonna come down, in fact, I hope we also with that, so keep in mind that, uh, these storms came, and we wasn't, weather service wasn't expecting them to have that type of punch, they kind of built us feed once they got upon us, so we want everybody to be aware of that, make sure they have, uh, you know, adequate alerts on their phones, hyper reach, uh, anyway, make sure they maintain their news and stuff like that. That rose to the next, um, they, I did receive a quote, uh, to get our sirens upgraded from. That rose to the next, um, they did receive a quote, uh, to get our sirens upgraded from federal signal. And we're looking at a total of sixty-one thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars. That's with the upgrade also during the maintenance on our. I do recommend that we have forty, say, if we get sent to pay probably roughly fifteen thousand in that, uh, that will cut the cost on the county on that.
We better pay twenty-five.
How?
We better pay twenty-five. Ask for twenty-five, maybe we'll get twenty-five.
Okay. Yeah, we, we, if we want to do that, try to let them have out on the side of the cost of that. I did reach out to a lot of companies, another companies, we're too far, but then they travel down. I try to get another quote. Uh, some companies don't deal with it because it's sole source, uh, specific, it's federal signal. Uh, so this company that is all, they recommend this company that's closer, that does, and they're, they're out of Georgia. That's closest one that I get. If we try to.
Yeah, before we approve it, we'd need a sole source info and all that in a minute.
Yeah, we get that in. Like I say, we try to put this in the budget. Uh, keep in mind that when we look at this, you know, tariffs may affect some of this, some of this, so. We just, it's a good price right now for everything that they're doing. And what they does is they're gonna use, we're gonna get rid of radios, we're gonna use cell, uh, cellphone coverage. So all the cellphone coverage in here, it'll be a blanket coverage on our, on our sirens. So any cell tower that they uses, we'll use that signal to bounce off of, uh, where the sirens location is. So that's the new technology they're going to now, get away from the radios. So I, I get that sole source back to you and then I bring it forward and try to put it in the budget for next year.
Get that twenty-five from the city.
Uh.
Get that twenty-five from the city.
This.
Go ahead.
So you know, this, I, I think this is definitely urgent matter. You know, June first, yesterday started hurricane season. And, um, we, you need to get the sole source, or we need to look and see where we can rob people, pay power, because in the middle of hurricane season, we don't need to wait till the end of hurricane season to get the sirens fixed. We need the sirens fixed, uh, now. So the sooner you can get that back, it's the better. We'll figure that out.
Do you know what the timeframe is to do the work? Did they give you?
Yeah, well, he said, once we get it done, they get the problem, they look at their problem two or three weeks, be down here and get it up and running. So I didn't know what the place was looking like, so, you know, we got money set aside.
Alright, appreciate it.
You need to set some chicken, that was like a grid.
Okay, why they do that?
Yeah.
I know, but.
Baker just gave a presentation and I know at one time this, this board wanted there and y'all to look at, trying to get, uh, all those fire station up to speed where we can have somebody at the fire stations like we was talking about. Uh, I think we need to start back trying to figure out what it's gonna take to do that. Cause we was looking into it anyway and, and you, I mean, you remember when we was talking about getting this thing where water just fall off in the truck?
Yes, yes.
The lines wasn't big enough to do whatever. So I think we need to get back to trying to figure out, uh, how we can do what's best for the, uh, residents in the county.
Well, you know, first thing, Scott, if, like you said, the rebate money, we, we're not asking for the whole thing. We just need enough to sustain our vehicles and get our stuff up and apart. Because with the illegal agreement the way it is, they're primary. Uh, if, if we just, if the board just give us just one year of our rebate money, that'll be enough to take care of our tire fleet. Like make sure we get vehicles, cause like I said, we need tankers, we need all, a lot of vehicles to go, we just pray in the face. And we, we got some great bodies, but we just need the equipment to, to, you know, as I say, they sacrifice, they do it. We just get that money that's allocated to us. All we ask for is just one year. If we get that, whatever that is, a hundred some thousand dollars, that'll be enough to try to suffice what we need, try to get our vehicles up and apart. We can make that happen. And we can review this once the illegal agreement is over.
I understand about getting the rebate money. What I'm talking about, Scott, can you help me with this? Because one time we was talking about having a couple of people stationed at, uh, our stations all the time. That's what I'm talking about.
Right, but you can't do it with the, you know, the illegal agreement in place now. It's, 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 it's fighting against it.
I, I, let's just act like we ain't got.
No, 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 we got the plan. The plan is already set. He just, they changed the dates on. We already got a plan. He's already said.
Where is the plan?
I got it on my computer. Scott has it copied. We did it back when Joe was there when, uh, we even got people there. They went outside, saw sites, come to open and watch, we were putting one.
So what, what is the holdup? Why we had that?
The money. We don't have the money.
So how many?
I think your total is gonna be like five hundred some thousand dollars to outfit those.
What I'm saying is this, I'm not trying to get negative against the city because of the city, but we pay them way more than that. So if that was the plan, we could have used that money to do what they were saying and, and we wouldn't have to pay them.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I think a good idea to behoove this would be at least two years or so before the next deal comes. We set forth a committee and include your volunteer fire departments and, and set forth a plan of, of doing that county, uh, fire. The biggest problem that felt like the board got was the insurance pressure. You have people saying, well, insurance rates are gonna jump up and that alarm property owners a lot. But based on Mr. Baker's report, it wasn't necessarily something that they, that they did have, uh, or should have concerns over. So. I know another one was water pressure. So the board can just have demands and figure out ways to address the water.
Wait, you know, like I said, that's kind of tankers and stuff. The way we originally said it is, we was gonna have two combination departments. What that mean is, we have one north and one south to be responding with the city also. Uh, you know, that's what the intent was, not to have all four stations operational. Uh, so we had the manpower, we did all that. We got all this stuff written down. Like I say, we just need to revisit it. Uh, we already say two years out because like I say, it gonna take sacrifice. We have to make sacrifices whether we want to do it or not.
And it could be something where the city buys in as well. Maybe if we have more manned fire stations in the county, there's less that need to be manned in the city. City's all congested.
And the plan was, we planned for sixteen five months. We was gonna make those sixteen five.
Who planned for sixteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Oh, sixteen.
Our plan was to make those county employees like that, where we could, they could manage the two stations on that. So that's, that's the whole intent of that was, but, you know, so we just had to go back to the notion and things, but, but right now, what the county needs, if we get that rebate money, we can get to the reception site and give what we need for that.
Alright, anything else, guys? Well, I think Brad should go. He'd be grilled enough.
That'll be, thanks.
Who's next?
Morning, boys.
Good morning.
Couple things for, um. Jordan Road, uh, last meeting, I'll trade Ford from his, uh, engineers to look, I thought it was a little bit surface on it. So we don't have any right ways there for the maintenance trees or whatever.
Which road was that?
Jordan Road, off Airport Road.
What you doing, Brad?
Not doing anything to that. They have a dead tire there, that's what's up off the road. If we did, they want us to look at about taking it down, but it's not on the county right way, back the right way. Another thing I have, we got a wreck out off of my road, uh, a month or so ago, hit the bridge, uh, toward the bridge, that's pretty good. That will be something that I would like to board to let people put I M S, that I M S, try to give us the estimate of it and see about getting it fixed. Cause it's a deep bridge. We don't have any way of getting over the rails to bolt the rails to it and then put the guardrails up, you know, the pedestal, the post on outside the bridge. They have to have cranks to go over and under to do it. We don't have anything like that within the county, but we need to get everything fixed. Uh, like Mr. Slubbers, it, it, much of the defeat, I'll work with him. He tried to recruit some of the warranty bits anyway possible.
Right, didn't, didn't look like they have insurance.
Yeah.
I think we confirmed that. I think I brought that to you.
You know, I don't know.
And the situation was, it explained that autistic child had grabbed a wheel, so it was not.
Like we'd be alive, huh?
Yes.
Drive off.
Really is.
But, uh, I was gonna say that we've, we've got a real bad problem with law enforcement of not even ticketing people with no insurance. I mean, you pull somebody over and they don't have insurance, that's an automatic ticket, I thought, but for some reason, I don't think the sheriff's department's doing it. I know the N A C S P D is not doing it. It's like it's too much paperwork for them, so.
I think in this instance, they were there lifting out and so maybe.
Yeah, well, that, that, you know, I'm not, that's one case. I'm talking about the overall scope of what's going on in Adams County. So many wrecks, no insurance, no insurance, no insurance.
Mr. President, let me ask you a question. So, so just say, I'm a law enforcement officer and I pulled somebody over and I, uh, asked for proof of insurance or whatever it may be. When they pull somebody over, don't they have their, their camera on to protect theyself?
I think so, yes.
So why they just can't run back the camera once they say or figure out that they don't have insurance? Then you got proof of whether they getting them a ticket or not because it's on counter.
Well, I can't speak for the city. I don't know what the sheriff's office does, but you know, if they go to a wreck, I'm assuming, um, they ask for driver's license insurance. That's the first two things they ask for. Uh. Mr. Buddy, you know what y'all do in that case?
That is what we. It is what we do.
And if they don't have insurance?
It's not hard to write it. I mean, but you're saying they're not, so.
I, I'm hearing that a lot. Uh, uh, and, and people get really aggravated, you know, about it, because they, they say, look, they, they didn't even get that doctor's ticket. They used, they used to run them in if they didn't have the insurance, but, and no license. But now it's like, nah, you know, but, and, and that's, that's why they make those laws.
I agree.
To protect people.
I agree, they'll, I'll play to write it.
So our insurance rates, I'm gonna go, Scott, he was talking about insurance this, the other day, a while ago earlier, seems like it was yesterday, but this morning. Uh, but, but all the insurance is gone though, but I mean.
I agree.
It's a nationwide issue. If you want to bury or uninsured, it's always good for you to have uninsured motorists, you know, because that covers not only if they're done with insurance, but there's not enough insurance to do it.
But then if you file on it, you get, you get kicked for it. Your insurance, or they cancel it. Okay.
I asked, I mean, I didn't get out of mess.
Okay, so you need a, uh, you need approval for that?
Put it out.
We need approval for that?
Fix. Yeah, I think.
Do I need approval?
I think I need.
Okay. So many things to make.
Motion by Mr. Middleton, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? This is the, the work on the wall. Now.
Bridge, I wrote a bridge. Thank you.
Alright. Any, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carried.
Next thing I have, uh, like E W P projects, we, uh, going to Florida, do the finals on those three sites. Um, you know, it was engineers estimate on those three sites. We come in with it, contractor bids, bids a hundred thousand dollars under to say what the estimate is. Uh, we go out and get started and it needs changes. You know, in the past, when we had changes, we come before the board, talk to the board, let the board know about what changes, what designs, you know, what they were gonna do to things. Uh, I myself was left out the loop of what changes are being made to them and they are making changes. It's just okay, and the extra dollar just left in that. Well, I think we need to get back, come back before the board, that's what we're forward on, what changes we're making. If everybody's up, updated on what, what they're doing on these projects. I mean, that's my thoughts. That's what we used to do in the past. We just moving away from it now or have moved away from it.
I didn't know they weren't coming back to change orders, because, uh, that's a big, that's a big deal to me.
So I know these sets here, they changed some on these sets and added rock and some other stuff on these projects here and we just did here, you know.
Mr. President, it's required if it changes the, uh, the funds by one percent or more.
Mr. President, let me ask you a question. Uh, uh, is, is that even legal?
Change orders are legal?
No, 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 no. I, I know a change order legal, but if we voting on something and say it's gonna cost a certain amount, then can anybody take it up on their own and do a change order without coming before this board to get it approved, to take that total figure up to something else?
Not if it increases beyond one percent.
So if it don't increase under one percent, they can do it?
That's right. And the theory behind that's why you have the engineer architect, because they're gonna manipulate.
Okay, so what, what we can make policy is that they need to come back before this board, even though, uh, they can do it. We need to know that they doing a change order and changing. But you know, I don't vote on change orders. I figured it both be there. But sometime you do have emergency situations where you gotta have a change order, but I ain't no change order man. I, I just think they need to come back before the board.
You, you wanna make a motion that we require them to come back for the board or any?
To require them to come back.
Any change orders on E W Ps?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion?
Uh, it's just important because the board needs to know, the board needs to be in loop and then Mr. Dollar as well, who we, uh, send out to check on these projects. He needs to know everything that goes on.
West.
So, you know, very.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Gaines, okay. All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, any, any names? Motion carried.
And with class C protection on each, I've talked with Mr. Ford, think we need to go to a class A protection. These are W Ps and C, we'll put that in.
What, what, what were they under?
C.
Where they don't have to use a, a packer basically?
Yeah.
You talking about a sheet foot or you talking about a packer?
Well, sheet foot, I mean, he, you know, I don't see him many times.
Either or, because they don't use either one, do they?
You know, yeah, well, sometimes you see, but a lot of times you don't. And I think we'll go to a class A, being Mike Green's been talking about it. So I talked to Mr. Ford about it. He said he would put that in his bag from now to do that.
Okay.
So I just bring that forward forward that he can make that change.
No problem with that?
The only other thing I have been swimming here, uh, about today, I talked to Scott last week. I hope the board asked me to go down and look and approve of what's going on. I did, uh, called the contractor. They had had the seed and worked in, out in the middle of it, done it, and now they said they were coming in with another, uh, payment this month, first of this month for a bridge and stuff they put in over the drainage ditch and all. But my concern is out in the field where they're doing in that levee, where they got, they filling dirt and all. And I know it's in place measure, am I correct?
That's right.
Alright. But the contractor telling me he's been rip rapping, he's built pitches, built barns and things, and it's still washing out. There's still a lot of big washes out there. And the grass is coming up. But to go approve it and see if the rental, we make that correct for as the washes and things like that. And before we find out about rip rapping, if they're asking for stuff like that and all that.
Hey, Sam, Mr. Sam, you turn that air up just a little bit or two.
Turn it up?
That's what this lady over here, they're free.
You hot?
Oh.
Are you got this?
Oh, calm down.
You cold?
Can't, she can't feel her hands. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, Robbie, as you stated, the project is high complete. Uh, we've been kind of in a shutdown with the river level being up. Uh, so when it gets back down, they'll be able to finish the, the living work. Yes, and the contractor is responsible for all erosion on the side. He'll have to come back and fix it at his own cost. Uh, I think to his detriment, um, he waited too long to, to grass it. As you see, everything that's grassed is fine. We're not gonna prove any rip rattle or whatever for him to, to fix what's going on, because he should have grassed that.
And the rebate for you here, I wanna know, cause he just said it in his other, he's not even for change orders. I think the rest of the board's in for change orders. Once he mentioned rip rapping, things like that, I figured they would be coming before the board, asking for that. We're dealing with just on another project with the same contractor. And I just wanted it from the board forward to let them know that it gives a lot of, I say a lot. It is some problems, with the erosion problems, and just wanna make sure it is responsibility of the night to fix that at home.
That's correct. That's correct.
That, that was my thing. I want the board to hear, because I feel like they'll be before the board before I.
Yeah, I can't help it. They want.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I wanted you to tell the board about.
We're not gonna prove anything.
Tell them that's.
We're not, we're not erosion control that is, that is there. Erosion control that is, that is there, um, is their responsibility. And I spoke with them back early on about getting out there and grassing it. I, I just think they were, you know, for whatever reason, they were delayed in doing that and that's on them. So they'll have to, um, fix whatever's washing out at their cost.
This is where they're digging dirt or this is where they're putting it?
This is where they put, put dirt.
Okay, are they packing it like, they're packing that dirt, aren't they?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they have to be on that.
But there's still a lot of, like I said, a lot of.
A lot of water.
This isn't, and this isn't the, I don't think you're talking about the levee being washed. This is the, what we're calling the drain wedge.
Okay.
So they built the levee around and then we, we had to build a wedge in the, uh, west end of the site to throw that water back to the east, to the drain pipes that have been put in.
Okay.
And that's, that's what this had some wash on.
That's it. Now, I appreciate you, like I said, I'll.
Appreciate it, man.
And that's all I have. Let's y'all have some.
Go ahead.
No, no, I just, on the last issue, I just want to, um, figure out who was gonna be responsible for calling the engineer. You got one engineer working. He heard what we said about, uh, no changing before coming for the board. And I think we put something in place and we come to work on EWT's. And I think somebody need to contact, be upon a contract to allow them to know, I'm talking about like recently, like soon. In that way.
Just emailing.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that he get it and that way he won't come back. A meeting in two months and then they make a change order and they hadn't been informed.
I copied your own email.
Yeah, I think we need to go to another meeting for what happened.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, for Robbie Lee, uh, you been there in Adams Bottom?
I have, front of the house.
Okay.
That's a big, we have a big problem. I don't know what's going on that hill so bad. I mean, we have got concrete barriers. We have done a lot of things involved. Really, it comes out. It's, it's just by technical.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to bring it to you.
Yeah, I bet.
And, uh, we got a serious dumping problem on Cemetery Road and Prince Edition. Now, when we got that dumping sign back at Prince Edition, I'm gonna show you some pictures.
So I'm on the blacktop in the Cemetery Road.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. As soon as you turn off MLK and you start riding down, I got the pictures. They're dumping it off on the side.
On the side, right. You know, we're out one, we're supposed to go court on the tenth and Scott, don't get that.
Right.
Take care of the beard till we get back to go or whatever, but we did.
I have one on, uh, Prince Edition. At the end, we have a no dumping sign. If you see what happened on the end of that road, uh, somebody got the seed.
I, I would say, you know, somebody lives there, somebody sees it, so nobody saying nothing.
Ain't nobody saying nothing, but it's costing, it, it, it's costing us money, man, and, and I hate to say this, but seem like in the twenty-first century, uh, no other seasons are doing it, but it, it's gonna come to the point where we almost gonna have to put cameras all over this camera. And, and, uh, I see people cleaning our houses or whatever the case may be. And, and if they not taking it to eighty-four or wherever they supposed to take it to, guess what they doing with it? They dumping it. And the penalty need to be so high that they won't do it no more. Because having stuff in place with no penalty, they're gonna continue to do it.
I said, we're probably on deathly way. He gone dump it, we're going to court, like I said, it's a seven year.
Mr. President, let me ask you a question. I, 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 I hear what he's saying. They going to court? But I thought it was something in place where we could give them a ticket. That's not in place?
You give them a ticket for?
For illegal dumping.
Yeah.
So.
I thought it was a thousand dollar fine.
Yeah.
They still gotta go to court?
Um, and you know, they can either pay the ticket or go to court.
Mr. Gray, for thirty-five dollars, they can go to Triad or whatever and dump that stuff out.
I agree.
And drive three miles to get there.
They have kind of a resident on contractor, it won't cost them anything, if they're not a contractor.
I guess we need to put that out there. Look, you, you know, you can either pay a thousand dollar fine or if you can get it in the paper, I see Jan's writing back here. You can pay forty dollars to dump it at that, that place or nothing, most likely if you're not a contractor. Or you can pay a thousand dollar fine if we catch you.
Well, I think we need to make them famous.
And we have.
If you need to make an example out of somebody.
I agree.
Because the two do, it's not what's up.
I mean, we have one set.
It was June tenth, the next Tuesday. We got one set that they gone up to.
We need to make them famous.
There's a billboard on the trailer out here in front of courthouse. We can rescan that baby if we need to.
Uh, Robbie, I asked you and, uh, Andrew about the two sixteen, two eighteen Greenfield Road, but you assured me that the contractor stuff is free. They laid them there and it's gonna be their responsibility to come out.
We brought it up in one beat, one time.
Yeah, that's been a couple of months now.
What, what are we gonna do if they don't pick it up?
If we pick it up, then they put it back to their taxes, same thing we do with the two car lots.
Uh, are you ready to?
Should it pay that?
Yes.
Yeah, because it's been out there a few months now.
About two months.
I mean, are you gonna have to make a motion? We're gonna have to put a sign up and, and all that, right?
Make some minutes. Yeah, I'll make a motion.
All right, motion by.
What's the address?
Hudson, two sixteen, eighteen, uh, Greenfield. It's two sixteen and two eighteen Greenfield Road.
I know, I thought that looked good.
Oh, we've got snakes in it by now. All right, motion by, uh, Ms. Hudson, second by Mr. Middleton. All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried.
And Robbie, you did tell them that, did? Because I had Robert to go back and.
They, they called me, I'm thinking of.
Yeah, they, they.
They might be around you. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I told you.
Nine Aberdeen Road. Appears to be some washing issues, uh, right in front of the mailbox. If you'll go out there, I'll leave it out with you if you want me to put it down. I'll talk to you about it later.
Somebody buy lunch when y'all do that, because I've never gotten on that.
But you know, we're.
Y'all are always riding together. I'm just wondering what's going on.
Don't ever eat.
Be faithful.
That's what I'm saying. He drive us about it anytime he wants to.
You got anything else, Robbie? Anybody got anything for Robbie?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Robbie, on Bark, Bark Street, uh, whatever.
Bark, yes.
Is, is right at the end of that person driveway that got a big old hole by me. I'm gonna send it to you. I'll send it to you.
All right.
Bark.
Mr. Frank?
I ain't got much, uh, just like, I wanted to let y'all know we don't have but four trustees. One of them with you on. The other three, more or less are doing maintenance, so don't be looking for a lot of trash to pick up. We're looking to get more trustees, but I used to say the ones that we, that we have right now, we make very good trustees. So to put out on the road, picking up trash, we're all working on that. Uh, we're also getting an estimate. One of the, one of the metal subjects, oil probably sell again in the floor. So we're getting estimates on that.
What happened then?
Uh, metal subject tore a hole in the floor. About to verify, they had it saved. They had it saved for them. It happened in bits.
I know you weren't guarding them, but, um.
No.
There's cameras.
Right.
How does that happen?
It happened. I mean, they, they ain't got somebody looking down the point.
And you don't have a guard going back and forth every once in a while?
But it happened within minutes. They got it on video. Very good of us on video. I mean, once he found a niche, he just, just went to tear it. I mean, of course, they got it out, but the damage was done by the time they got it out.
Every year.
Yeah, and it, it don't, it don't take long. One, one, five little niche, I mean, I mean, that, that's the way it works with them. Uh, also, we're working on lightning strike. I'm sure y'all had some of that happen in the county. It wore us out over the sheriff's office. I mean, we're still, we're compiling the list of, of everything, but then we found the Sonic wall. Got knocked out. We found it Friday. You know, it's, it's, it's just daily building. I want y'all to be aware that we are keeping a compiled list on everything that the lightning strike took out.
Do we need to call the insurance company on something or has they been to contact?
We need to get a list first.
Right, that's why, I just want y'all to realize that we did get hit, which I know several other people got hit, but I just think it's nice. I just want y'all to be aware that we are keeping a tally on everything and keeping a compiled list on it.
If y'all recall, you had a public insurance adjuster. He's doing an audit within the next few weeks and, and if it's something more valuable, you send him the list too. Maybe he can tell you how it's worth it or not.
But that's all I got.
Oh, I got something. Uh, who goes? Henry Frank Senior.
Henry Frank Senior?
Yeah, that's you.
That would have been my grandfather.
Well, it says here we, uh, request for pay authorization.
Yeah, I'm, I'm the third.
Okay, they got that wrong then.
Right.
Oh, pay rate change from twenty-three seventy-seven to thirty-eighteen an hour. Sixty-two thousand, seven hundred, seventy-four, forty a year. To you.
No, it's modified.
I need a motion.
New duties, right?
Yes.
Okay. So that's for the new duties.
It's for grandfather.
Yeah.
Fire investigator, yeah.
And, uh, I had discussed with Mr. Bradford, the insurance patent. I'm gonna take some of, uh, Mr. Bradford's budget for this year and apply it to the courthouse. So that, that was the problem. He couldn't pay out of two points. He had to be paid up.
Okay.
So moved.
All right, move by Mr. Middleton, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried. All right, that's all you had?
That's it.
You take complaints? Get the R and M?
All the time, all the time.
All right, appreciate it. Who's next?
Good morning, board. Um, so I got a few little things. Um, first off, uh, the airport employees are asking me a question. I need some clarification on with this, um, new move. Are they county employees or are we still a separate entity?
Employee?
Yes.
No, it's, it's the same. They're, they're, it's all the same.
Still separate entity.
Still the same.
That, that's what I need.
Yeah.
Um, also, uh, met with the advisory board and Kevin, we have a grant agreement that I need ASAP uh, for the runway safety project. Um, they approved it in the last meeting to get signed by you and.
You're, you're applying for a grant?
Yes, we're applying for a grant. Normally I do these all the time. Granted, the grant applications don't bind the county to anything. It's just asking for the money. Once they agree to it and submit back, that's what be the binding. These are normally nothing. Normally I sign these with no problems, but, um, going through the new change, I got this.
So what, what is it?
Um, it's a grant application for the runway safety area at the end of runway three two. We got written up for it on the last FAA inspection. And if I do not get this grant this year, it could end up costing the airport thirty thousand dollars because I won't get a grant this year or get pushed back. This year, the FAA is gonna pay ninety-five percent. State's gonna pay two and a half percent. We would only have to match a two and a half percent on this project. But if, well, like I said, if I do not get this in and get it, you know, applied immediately, you know, we go back to paying five percent, that's thirty thousand dollars or more.
I think you solved that deal. Go ahead.
Can I ask a question? Is that the form that you sent me that you needed signature, that you needed to know who to sign it? So I did have on my list, and I'll go ahead.
Okay.
That, um, he sent the form to me and asked for a signature and an attorney's signature, so I was going to recommend to the board that it be Scott and myself as signatories for the grays.
So I need to get these signed as soon as possible.
We need to go ahead and do this today to?
Mr. Attorney. Are you there?
He must have.
I mean.
Yeah, they didn't apply for a grant and it, it isn't binding at all.
I don't know. Are you on the same page with the county administration?
Yeah. It's not right. I had requested.
You wanna go ahead and make your request now?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. All right. You heard the request?
Something.
Moved by Mr. Middleton, second by Ms. Hudson. All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried. Okay, you give it to.
And, and as you know, Ricky, what's super important is what, that it ends up in minutes, not, you know, who signs it really is important versus for us.
Okay, what else you got, Ricky?
Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, so I'm, I'm, I'm at, I'm just trying to ask a question for some clarity on it. So with the grant agreements and stuff like that, I know we made the change from affiliates to.
Advisors.
To advisor. So when we did that, so just like grant agreements and stuff like that, that they normally would, the advisory board get, so they're not allowed to sa- uh, go ahead and sign them like they did and move forward. Uh, how does that work?
They just, as it's proposed, they just say, we recommend this or we don't recommend it, and then the board gets final approval. Similar to similar to the nine-one-one board. If they make a grant, they'll recommend it and you all approve it or not.
Okay, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to get clear.
And, and the way, what we just did was now Richard can submit it directly, uh, Ms. Khan and, and Scott will look it over and we don't have to.
Okay.
It's something they, they deem as necessary for us.
Okay, I clear it. Uh.
Okay. Yes.
All right, so I have, uh, a proposal from AirMed that wants to bring a bird and actually base it at the airport. Uh, it'd be very beneficial for the airport because we're gonna get the fuel cells off of it. Um, the question that I have is the lease for this possibility. Um, they're wanting to take over the remainder of the community hangar. Um, we actually get probably two hundred and ten dollars worth of revenue off that community hangar right now from, you know, uh, outboard tenants or, or we do have a couple of tenants are there until we get the new T-hangers filled, which are a hundred percent planned. We should be going out for advertising for the construction. Um, so it shouldn't be too long before we have more hangers. But I did talk to AirMed about leasing partial of that hangar and allowing the people to stay in there until we got room to put them somewhere else. And they said yes, but I need to know how I need to move forward on the lease.
He said two, ten, eight months?
That's all we get out of that hangar. Two, ten a month.
But that's what happens, right?
Well, they're, they're looking at right now, they, they wanted to know if they can take over the whole thing. Because now they're talking about bringing in more birds in the future, but they know they got one that's ready to come. But I told them I couldn't give them all of it because I still have tenants that are in there at the moment. Until I have a place to put them, I would only lease them half of the building until I can rid room to get.
Okay, now, this is separate from the one that's behind Ruth?
Yes.
Different company?
Yes.
Okay, do we have anything legally that says we're bound to ones, air service, air service? Uh, we don't have any kind of agreement with them other than what we do through the county as far as, uh, the AirMed service.
And we're just checking cafeteria plan for that.
Yeah, okay, I just, I just wanna make sure we didn't have some agreement somewhere and then we're gonna violate it. We did that.
Are they gonna have to make changes to that hangar?
Well, they will want, they will want to in the future, um, but right now they're just trying to get somewhere to put that. They got a, uh, they're running from Jackson to New Orleans, starting on the eleventh of this month. And they are trying to get a place where they can put a bird that can be accessible and be able to move. So they're actually trying to get something that, that really, really quick in order to be able to have a place to put a bird so they can actually get ready to go if they need it. Um, so I've been trying to rush this through because I just found out about it, but I, I don't know how to proceed with the leases.
Oh, do you already have a rate for something like that? Because they're, they're taking over a big space and they're gonna be?
I do not have a just cost for that. Um, I know what we charge for the seventy by seventy hangar, um, box hangar that we have on the other end. Um, so I was looking for something similar to that, so I was looking at somewhere around five hundred a month to start off.
Okay, is that something you're gonna work with your board on?
Yes.
And then get back with, uh?
But I need to see how the leases are gonna go because I gotta try to figure out how to rush this through. So is, am I creating the lease or is it going to the board create a lease or, or how can I get this and, and expedite?
You should probably use the lease that you got, that you just refigured anyway.
We got a lease, change the things.
And put the amount that you think is fair market value. Have your advisory board bless it and come to the board for approvals, but.
Or come to Scott and, uh.
I don't think the board wants to.
Ms. Khan.
They just want, you know, approve the final decisions of the advisory board.
Okay, so I'll get that changed and get that sent to you probably both of y'all by the end of the. Okay, so I'll get that changed and get that sent to you probably both of y'all by the end of the day so we can try to get this. Maybe I can do something with the advisory board quick. Um, last off, um, that I've got, I don't know what to do with these. Um, these are your request proposals for your field. We had two people, um, apply for. Um, we didn't open them. They're still closed. The advisory board cannot make recommendations on fuel, so how do I get these going?
Why can't they make recommendations on fuel?
Because the ethics department says they cannot make recommendations that could benefit them in the future.
If they're a tenant, eh?
No, if they're a tenant, yes. And I know two of my board members are tenants.
So three can put.
So I don't have three yet.
Do we?
That's what I was gonna ask you. Uh, has the E L E been coming? He, has he been coming or not? He has not. Okay. I would definitely make contact with him again today because I did speak with him to see if he wanted to be, uh, reappointed to the advisory board. And he told me he would get back with me in a couple of days, but I have not heard from him. But I will make contact with him.
Uh, Scott, do you want, uh, do you want him to go ahead and open them now or us do that or you and, uh, Ms. Khan wanna handle that?
Um, I'll speak because I've done it before. It, it's not something you can just do like that. If you're gonna, we need to go through it and read it and see what they're offering us as far as incentives to get their business.
You probably need to read it in a public circumstance though, so that, just so that you don't, I mean, you're saying nothing's been changed, so he can read an, announce two lines and then take them under advisement.
Okay, well, I understand. I, I, I think he's gonna have to open them because some of them might offer a truck for free or something and.
That's what I'm saying. You have apparel.
And I asked for six copies from each one of them, and what I'm feeling right here is one, so you're probably gonna have to make copies.
I, I will make it to see.
Let, let just let Scott and Mr. get together and look over them and then bring it back to us.
Yeah.
Uh, can, can we make a motion in lieu of what y'all's decision is after you, you poll us?
Yeah, I'm, I'm emailing the Ethics Commission right now to get it straight.
Then, then you can just poll us instead of, uh, have a call.
No, that, that advisory board can't make.
No, 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 no. That ain't what he said. He say he have two people on there that could benefit from the decision that they make. That's what he just.
And he doesn't have enough votes. He doesn't, I don't have enough party key.
Those two could recuse themselves if they had enough members, but they don't have enough members. That's what I heard.
Yeah, that's it.
If they're advisory board members, they probably can still make recommendations. They don't make.
If they're gonna have a, a, advantage for themselves.
Yeah, I mean, it, you, it's just recommendations. They don't have any decision making.
And they can't, they can't.
They're not setting fuel prices.
They could just put their, uh.
This is selecting a fuel provider.
Provider.
They rated.
Either way, we're gonna take the business.
And, and.
So are we gonna open it?
Let's open it, identify and take it under.
What do you have?
Either way, I take admission on the one oh five-three A. Nevertheless, members of the missile airport advisory group may not make recommendations which would benefit themselves or relatives or their business in compliance with section twenty-five dash four, one oh five dash one. So.
Twenty-five dash what?
It says twenty-five dash four dash one oh five, parentheses one, conflicts of interest.
Yeah.
That's what you got?
Okay, well, go ahead and open the first bid and, uh, it's kinda ridiculous.
So the one I received, the first one, I received it on five fifteen at nine thirty-eight.
I hope they're good for more than two weeks.
Well, I contacted both of them and let them know that we were gonna be a little bit late. I also reached out to Titan and told them that since their contract was expired on the thirty-first, we were gonna need to do month-to-month extension until we can get something signed. So trying to take.
Titan, who you using now? You're using one of their trucks?
We're using Titan, one of Titan's trucks.
One of theirs a bid?
Uh, yes. So the. So the first one that I received is add fuel. And then I've got, uh, the last one will be Titan. Um, I, I thought I was gonna have Delta Fuel, but they called and withdrew theirs at the last minute saying they couldn't solidify their offer. So they were, they withdrew their.
Delta Fuel.
Delta Fuel, they withdrew their.
That, so those things, you need to, uh, say the name?
Something to identify the actual bid or whatever.
And then this one was on the fifteenth at one oh three. So they were both before the sixteenth, and this is Titan.
The, the, the first page still is what we need to know?
Um, there, there's, like on the score sheet that I have right here, is what we are looking for in order to try to move forward. Um, we, we're asking them for certain items and how we score would be by looking to make sure that they put it in there and which one would actually give us the best benefit. Um, I have, I haven't get that either one of them. I haven't talked to either one of the fuel providers about it because I was waiting until we opened them. But I could actually reach out and look myself now.
Mr. President, Scott, legally, since he opened them in his bid, he have to go back and look at them and they say they have this, this, or that. Am I correct? That's what we did on the previous bid. So, so what I'm saying, on previous bids that we did work with, since I've been here, you might say, do they have an addendum? Do they have a bid on? And then after they ha- read those things to make sure they qualify, then we take them under advisement.
Right, he's, he's to identify a sufficient enough of the bid.
And that's what I'm saying. So he just opened them. So what do he need to identify so we can take them under advisement?
You want to look at them and call them out too?
Yeah. So they give you the highlights at the beginning, but then you have to read through it because there's sometimes.
My brand?
Yes, yeah. Who was the first one?
The first one was, is that Brandon Fuel Supply?
It's add fuel. It, oh, which one do you get?
Oh, add fuel. Here it is. Okay. Add fuel. Is that the one we had before Titan?
We had epic before Titan.
Do we have a, we don't have a credit card program now, do we?
No, we have the, uh, self-serve, uh, they do a, uh, what they call, we call them a brick. It's a, it's a credit card, um, thing that we run through USA Bank. Um, so it's not actually the fuel providers that's going through USA Bank, but if, if they provide one, we could use theirs.
Okay. I think they, they, they are providing one.
Are you warm now? Can you take your hands?
Okay, so it says here that they work with United Airlines on the airport to identify a fuel truck that meets the needs of the airport, but. That, that doesn't say.
You're just identifying.
Yeah.
Right, next, the next one.
Uh.
All you're doing is setting up just to get.
Okay.
Go to the next.
And, and then go to the next bid.
Go to the next.
Okay, next.
You'll just have a lot of time to revise it, in particular the airport that a bid was submitted.
Yeah.
So that's, they can't say we swapped bids or anything.
I mean, you can see.
Usually you have like basic price or whatever, where you can just say the bid bond is secure, the bid bond gives you your amount and that.
There should be a price in each one of, for that week's fuel cost.
Yeah.
Okay. And this one, I came to the, the price first. So in Baton Rouge, um, with freight and everything included, the price would be two dollars and forty cents, or that's what it is as of the week of May nineteenth. Two dollars and forty cents for the jet fuel and three dollars and twelve cents for the add gas. That is it. That was just the two. And I'm gonna go to this one, say back the dollar price.
Yeah.
Okay, here it is. That's, okay, here we go. Jet A, and this is coming from Baton Rouge as well, and this price was through May thirteenth through the nineteenth. And it was two dollars and thirty-three cents. And then the add gas was three dollars and thirteen cents. So they're, they're really not that far apart. It's now just the fine details everywhere.
Okay, so we're, I'll just take it under. Okay.
I'll make a motion that we take the bids, um, under advisement.
Okay, motion by Mr. Gaines, taken by Ms. Hudson. All in favor? Uh, any names? Most curious. Okay. We're taking bids under advisement, and you, you've got the letter, he's got the US sign.
Yeah, I, I do have one more question. Do we need to get the commissioner's approval to skin Titan an additional month for fuel?
Um, I mean, Titan was good with it. I mean, I was gonna give it to advisory board and have them.
Okay, okay. So just to, like, I know that the actual Titan contract was through May third first, so we just extended it, uh, until we go through the bids and make a recommendation.
All right, is that all you had? That's all good.
Appreciate that.
Yes. Is that all, all departmental reports?
See the resolution. It was a resolution about that buyer board.
When you seen it happen?
It's only the last week, two weeks ago. I'll resend it and then next meeting.
Okay, uh, I guess. You wanna be, you wanna do the hearings when we come to you? I'll go around the table to, uh, Mr. Gray. What?
Public comments.
Public comments? Is somebody here for public comments? You? Yes, go, podium, sorry, I'm trying to do three, three things at once here. Yeah. Y'all are still laughing, aren't you?
I don't know the gentleman, I just can't observe and see if, if our address will come up in a meeting or not. Uh, my, I hear an address come up, uh, so, uh, I'm here waiting, uh, after the last being, uh, waiting for the last appearance of our address, two forty-one Morgan Town Road. I heard erosion projects and, and things happening on Morgan Town Road, uh, continues to be, I didn't know from the consistent of our property or not, at the Church of Jesus Christ God's Son, uh, I rescinded the case a month ago, uh, regarding the erosion, uh, and, and, and Mr. Gray has, had asked me if it would be okay if it was sent out to engineer again, just like after viewing the videos and to make a comeback with a determination as to what, uh, 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 he would recommend. Uh, but as I recall, uh, that was not a motion, and, and the second neither was, uh, hoped to do that by the board, I don't think. And so maybe that's the reason why he's not going. So I never heard anything back. So I don't know if y'all gonna, I just wanna know if you're gonna do anything, you're planning to do anything, or do anything, or should I go somewhere else and move further? Uh, because there's a serious problem that I'm, I'm addressing. I'm trying to see what, what's on your minds, I guess.
Mr. Gray, does that one have video? Okay, and you send it to Mr., uh, to the engineer?
Yeah, uh, but, but, uh, Mr. President, uh, when I mentioned from Merrell Drive to Foster Mall Road and ex-supervisor Gaines was the church in, what is his name?
And, uh, Ben Dumb, and Thomas Smith, yeah.
Thomas Smith was inside what we was doing. So to my knowledge, we gave the, uh, engineer, uh, what he supposed to be doing?
He was going out taking a study of floodwater.
The what we do.
Surveying and looking to do.
Drainage.
But, yeah.
So that includes your area. That includes your area. When I was talking about that, that includes your area. That was a motion. It, it includes your area.
And specifically, if, if you were checking on the erosion of the church property that were in the graveyard and all that as well, not just the streets, uh, not that road.
No, he gonna check the street.
Right, that's what I thought.
And, uh, from Merrell to Foster Mall, right?
Correct.
With all the water that we had.
Okay.
That's what he, that's what I asked him to do.
Okay. But out of the last meeting that he was here, we was across the street when we met, you showed the engineer the videos of his property at that time, and he was gonna do some research and come back with some information of what might could do to him with your problem. Uh, did he find some of the, you know, to see what it was? Mr. Gray's giving videos of that too at the time.
I appreciate it, board. Uh, I know you're all busy, everybody's busy. I appreciate the time. Uh, in a way, you can give us, in a way, you can. Right, we, we appreciate it, so.
We, we didn't get here overnight.
I know.
And, and the solution is not gonna be overnight, but we are working on trying to come up with, uh, 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 something to help you out.
Pastor, what's your full name for, so she can get it into the record?
My name, Gregory Whiteface. I am, uh, the volunteer pastor of the church, uh, Jesus Christ God's Son, two forty-one Morgan Town Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else? All right, Mr. Gray.
You here for me?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. President, I, I didn't want to update on Morgan Town Road. We got the ex, the engineer, I got an update on Morgan Town Road. You don't, you don't.
Not much has been happening, uh.
We're redoing the plan and, we're redoing the job.
Say what now?
We're redoing the plans and, and we're redoing the job.
Well, I missed the last couple of meetings I did in the neighborhood, why? Because basketball season, they need an update on what's going on, and I'm not gonna be there Monday. So, uh, I need to get them an update on what's going on on Morgan Town Road, so.
When, when you say they're redoing the plans, is this because of that back oak tree or something else?
Uh, it's, that's part of it, but it, but it really.
Part of it and part of it's from that back oak tree on to, uh, Redwood.
Redwood.
Okay, uh, I know this getting closer and closer to, uh, budget season, and, uh, how are we gonna have a budget season? Are we gonna be part of the department heads coming in and putting in and requesting, uh, whatever they wanna request? Uh, how are we gonna do that? That's what I need to know.
I'm hoping to get around to all the department heads, so when they do call and request that we have a big budget for these, so I'm trying to get, um, my goal is to get ahead of it.
So the game plan is you're gonna do it on your own then present.
No, I'm not gonna do it on my own. I'm gonna do it with them.
No, no, I'm talking about.
Okay.
You and them and then present.
And then bring it to Charlie and I can.
So it'll be a big.
It won't.
A cluster.
That's how state law provides it. Like right now, they're supposed to be sending over draft budgets, and by July first, she should have a law from all the departments. And then by August first, she should have a draft budget. Never outwards, but that's how laws, they set it up to be.
Okay, well, with that being said, uh, that's pretty, well. Uh, we, again, attend a conference and, uh, this. this, uh, I'm gonna get with you.
Okay.
To give you some information where you can get with the, uh, what are their names?
Who's that? Uh, Sharon, Sharon.
Because a, a very interesting conversation came up in one of our classes, and it said, what every leader need to know about hormonal health and aging. And they talked about some stuff dealing with women that me as a man wasn't familiar with. And it affects women on their job. So I got this information, and I'm gonna try to get it to you.
Okay.
Because I, I wanna make sure that, uh, if a woman going through anything, that they get what they need to get where they can do the job to the best of them.
Yes.
Uh, my sympathy goes out to, to the Flynn family, the Reason family, the Page one family. And, uh, one of our former employees, Marilyn Washington lost her mother. With the Stapley family, the Stokes family, the Washington family, the Page family, the Johnson family, the Freeman family. And, uh, Brad talked about it earlier, they had an incident in Jefferson County. And, uh, former constable and now Justice Co- Ju- Judge Maurice Hudson lost his son. And, uh, I saw this, and I'm gonna read it. Power concede nothing without a demand. Opportunity and prosperity is for everybody. Dignity and respect is for everybody. We have given our children everything they want without giving them what they need. Somebody wrote a book on it, that's where I got it from, so, uh, we, we got some serious problems, and, uh, the majority of the shootings that I have witnessed lately have been black on black crime. And I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm out here every day, I talk to people, but it's beyond talking. I really don't know how to address the black on black crime that is going on, not only in our community, but, but my concern right now is our community. And I pray that, uh, something happen all over this world, but enough is enough. And if anybody else got any kinda, uh, ideas of what we can do, or who we can bring to, to the table to, uh, talk about this situation, i- i- is, is, is not going away. And as a black man, it really, really bothers me with all this black on black crime, and, and there's nothing I could do to help. You know, I heard somebody say, well, the elected officials ain't doing nothing. The police department ain't doing nothing. Well, my opinion is totally different because to my knowledge, when I was growing up, didn't no elected official have nothing to do with the outcome of my life, it was my parents. So maybe we need, maybe they need to get back to some parenting because I just don't think it's the police department, the sheriff department, and elected official fault. Now, we can provide all kind of recreation activities, or whatever the case, for kids. But when, but when you say, is our fault that they out there killing each other? Nah, it ain't my fault. I'm just gonna tell you right now, that I don't think it's nobody on this board fault what's going on with black on black crime. But if anybody have a solution, or anybody have anything that can prevent it, I, I mean, I'm here.
Mr. Gray, if you don't mind me stepping in. I know that you've helped most of your life with juveniles and bas- basketball and, and every other sport, and, and you're always out in community. Angela does the same thing with her stuff. Mr. Gaines does it with rodeo, and Wes does it with baseball and what have you. Every, everybody here puts a hand out in community and helps, so I, 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 I think you're absolutely correct. They, they shouldn't be pointing the fingers at us, as, as community leaders, we, we, we give everything we can most of the time. Um, and, and the other thing is, being a parent myself and a grandparent, um, I did not give my children enough time, I don't, it just, my time itself. I was too busy working, uh, and, and I think that I, I read, somebody had something on Facebook yesterday, he said, instead of driving eighty-five thousand dollar truck, I'd drive a five thousand dollar truck. Therefore, I don't have to work overtime, so I can be at my kids' functions. Um, things like that, so if, if parents aren't involved, a lot. And, and I know how hard it is to make a living, so I'm not blaming the parents, I just know how it is. But, uh, and the grandparents step in a lot of times, and the ants and all the, um, it, it is tough, but, uh, and the, the other thing I see when you started talking about that, I remember at Susie Big West when I was a kid, the classroom size were twenty, twenty-two kids, maybe, and those teachers loved their children, and, and they taught their children. Uh, and, and, and I don't think there's enough time today anymore for the, the, the teachers to teach the way they used to. Uh, or they, or we, we just don't have the funds, or we don't use it properly, it might be the better way to put that. But, uh, that's my take on that, Mr. Gray. Thank you.
Uh, in closing, I, I'm, I'm gonna say this again, and, and I believe this with everything. We give our children everything they want. We get, without giving them what they need.
This is what? Anytime.
I don't know how you fix this problem, but it's a serious problem. And, uh, I think you just still gotta get to the root of the problem, and, and, and nine time out of ten, the root of the problem is gonna be at the house. And, uh, I'm gonna say this from my family. I know my mom and daddy, and my sister, and my other siblings did all they could do for their kids. Some of them still didn't turn out how they supposed to turn out. And I know for a fact in my family, we did everything we can, we could, to provide them with everything that they needed. And they still went in a different direction. So, uh, sometimes it's, it's not even, even at the house. Because once they leave the house, they get an opportunity to hang out with some people that they don't supposed to be hanging out with, and once you get tied into outside influence, and it is not the best influence for you, and sometimes you do things that you don't normally do. And, and the majority of the time, the people that's raising you don't even know you do. And once they find out what's going on, sometimes it's too late, the damage is already done. So as a black leader in this county, with all the black on black crime, I talk to a lot of people, and, and I'm just gonna say it, and I try to help them on the front end. And some of them, I can't help, and some of them I can't, and the ones that I can't help, I do tell them this. If I reach out to you on the front end, and you don't want my help, when, when they get the felony, I can't help you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Oh, can I stop you one second? Ms. Campbell, did you have something you needed to?
Yeah, I was just gonna give a, a brief departmental, um, update, but everything's going well so far. Um, census are a little low, but I did have a recommendation, I know they're trying to place, um, replace my physician. And I was, um, in recording this morning, and I don't know if you guys know, but their, um, day-to-day operation is pretty much ran by an LPN. It's one LPN with two LPNs with one medical assistant. And they use Doc and Bo, they comes in once a week. So I know cost has been a big thing, and all of that, I think that's something that could be considered. Um, since she sees it sometimes even, uh, about six hundred animals. And the captains out in here that we're seeing is probably like one thirty. So I know that physician, if, if you are looking at cost, I, I don't know the cost, but I think that will be something to consider also, just bringing an LPN, um, with, uh, only thing if you do, like, keep a nurse practitioner home once a week, you have to still pay Dr. Wolf or Art if they collaborate. But for medical doctors, they, they don't eliminate that cost too. So you have a LPN, a medical assistant, and then I have a medical director that comes once a week. And I think it, it could run everything, juvenile, employee clinic, because it's LPN, she can do, you know, she can give injections, she can run the food clinic, she can order, she can go by standing orders, but she can do all of that.
All right, sounds good, uh, if you have a name come up, that, that's somebody that's got the psychic for that, cause you know, that's a, you've been there, you know how hard that job is. So you have to have somebody that's pretty tough. Dick skin.
You say a LP?
Yes, a licensed practical nurse. It doesn't have to be a registered nurse in R and E, it could be a building manager. Do all the duties. Any questions?
Thank you, we'll, maybe we'll put together a list, and we can interview him, or with you, with your help or something.
Did we put anything out there?
We got it there. Question to meet you.
Thank you.
Cause President, my last, I, I forgot one thing, I wanna just, uh, send my congratulations out to all the college and university graduates. Thank you.
Yes. Go ahead, miss.
I'm gonna elaborate on, on what Supervisor Gray said a little bit. Two weeks ago, I spoke on youth kids to a group. And, and I'll re, follow you with what you said. We're gonna have to catch hold of our kids, uh, if we wanna see a change in all this crime rate and everything. As parents, I know we are busy and we work, but we also gotta pay attention to our kids. Um, one thing else, I did as a parent, and I worked, and I did everything else, but I was there for my child. I took all the time she needed, you know, to be there for her. We got to learn to start not letting our kids make decisions as parents. You got kids that's telling a parent what they're gonna do and not do. Um, just last week, uh, with the work program that we have, the youth work program, I, um, we have these kids that work for a family. One kid did not show up the next day. So I contacted the parent, and she said, oh, I woke him up and he didn't show up, and I said, yes, he didn't show up. And she said, well, let me go in here and find out what's going on. So she calls me back, and she tells me, he doesn't wanna work in the sun. Couldn't have been my job. A job, and you're gonna tell me you don't wanna work in the sun? That's where, that's where things go wrong, when kids are starting making decisions and parents are accepting it, that's a problem. I have a problem with that, that kinda just totally messed my whole day up. You know, it, it really did, I was just stunned. And
I agree.
You know, that.
I told that to my parent.
Yeah.
When I was sixteen or seventeen, and he said, well, then you better stay in school, or you're gonna be working in the sun.
Really?
And I had a good working sun.
Right, I agree, you see? Um, and another thing else, just all this YouTube stuff, and that, that just warning our kids. I mean, they think that is all good, you know, we get all kids, all this electronic, and they, they do YouTube all day. That's warning kids.
There's some bad stuff on there.
Yeah, some bad stuff on there. We're, we're deleting it for my, for my grandkids, from their, I do iPad and everything, you can find a way to delete all that YouTube off of there where they can't go to it. But that's what I wanna say about that, we, we just gonna have to find a way to reach our kids, and as parents, you know, they look for the teachers to do, it's not the teacher's job to raise your kids, it's your job to raise your kids. So, uh, we're gonna find a way, and, and I try to, um, mentor kids as much as I can, you know? A lot of parents come to me and they talk to their kids and stuff like that, and I try to as much as I can. But, um, that's pretty much what I had to say, you know? Everything else, I've had to care of it more.
Thank you. Mr. Gaines?
Uh, one of the things that I think, uh, I want to, I don't think we need a bunch of approval, but I was gonna run for the board, cause I think John might have in his board, in his budget. If it's not, I do wanna ask for, um, three more, at least three more lights at the arena over there, bloodlights, uh, in the back, uh, so I don't think it'll be a, a, a bunch of money for, for that, but I, I hadn't actually been, uh, myself, but I've had several, several, uh, different people saying at the back of the arena, uh, where you can't see, it's dark there, and, uh, light don't actually stop crime, but a whole lot of time it'll prevent, or cause people to see. And so, you know, that is a, that was a really, really, uh, personal thing, and, you know, my cados goes out to judge, uh, hustling up there, Maurice, that was his son. And, uh, he's been my personal friend from my mechanic days, that expert tire, all the way over there. And it got really, really personal to me because probably during the shooting, me and my, uh, I was kinda two heads fussing, uh, the storm kinda did me bad, so I had probably a hundred and fifty yards of fence to fix, and I was in the bushes fixing fence, and here go my son, show up at four thirty. I said, you got a way of showing up and work over? And we, uh, had the argument that he wanted to go to the, um, the festivity in Fayette, and he stayed there until eight, and he wanted to go, and I told him, no. So we had a powwow about him not going, and so, you know, on the next morning, uh, on yesterday morning, I said, well, you know, it don't matter if you mad, and if you still mad, I'm still a little mad, and we gonna straighten it out today. But at least I have an opportunity to straighten it out, and didn't have the opportunity to come and pronounce you dead, or you shot, and I, my sympathy goes out to all of them. But a- again, as a, a leader, and so leaders and crime in the black community, crime is crime in every community. But it is raging in our communities, and so, you know, I, I, I guess I do a lot more studying and not refuting what you said. But life has changed right now, and I know a lot of time, people look for somewhere to blame, I get blamed all the time. You know, you get blamed for social security, uh, check got cut off, call my supervisor. And that's a real, I'm, I'm serious, that's a, that's a real live call I got. My social security check got cut off, I actually had a call, a lady called back and says, I come back to move to town to buy my mother's house, and the bank is not giving me the right interest. And somebody told me, call my supervisor, he can straighten it out. No ma'am, I cannot.
He can do anything.
So we used to the blame, but one thing that I think we missed, and it hurts like that, uh, cause all these communities, neighboring is small, when you been in the public loans I have, you know somebody, or one of the, um, little, uh, young ladies that fell with the video going and got leg broken, that's my son's second cousins, you got, you got people tied together, but we look at a root cause of it, and they say parents. And even though we look at the parents, it do start at home. But we don't even look at, back in the day, my mama, or my grandparents, my uncles, they didn't care about the system. Now you go whoop your child, now you go to jail. So you, you not, you not addressing the root cause. The root cause ain't because the parents, some parents, now don't get me wrong, some parents don't. But some parents, uh, when your system is controlled by somebody else, and you go whoop your child, and you bruise, and you gotta go to jail. But pack your clothes and take it with you. A pack, or go ahead and get me, because I will run. A pack, uh, go ahead and get me because I would rather you to get me because what the system has to offer them, rehabilitate, it's, it's way higher than you think. Just think about it. Then a potential should be rehabilitation system. You really could call it reentry system. Because fastest one get out is, is they repeatedly goes back. Cause it's a business. It's cause it's a revolving door. Because you know why it's a revolving door? The true fact of the matter is, it's a revolving door because as they get higher, it's a, it's a fee form. It's a fee. They gonna get paid, they gonna get paid. It's a big business. So, you know, and parents, we got music, we got TV, we got all that. You got younger kids having kids. And so Supervisor Gray, I know they bring my Supervisor Wilson, Supervisor Hutchins, same thing. I'm proud of Supervisor Miller. But we are not the father of everything. And I mean, I think our heart hurts any matter go. But it's way bigger than us right here. So I say that to me, start with myself is what I am, not gonna lie. Like he's right, uh, Supervisor Wilson. Uh, I've been, I go rodeo. Everybody know I don't wear the cowboy hat. I specifically put coolers on my truck. I don't drink soda. But all the little children, I went to a pre, a, a daycare graduation. And you know what the mama said? Said you not gonna speak to him? That's the man at the rodeo got the cooler on the truck. Get it, get it juiced up. You, you, you are a influence over the community, but it starts at home. And I just know, we pray to God for to do it and my heart just bleed for that. It is a epidemic and I don't know how we get a hold on it, but I always put myself in the situation. And I've been there and a lot of people don't even realize, you don't know how it is to raise one right. You don't know how it is to raise one to make him do right. Teach him hunt, fishing, uh, uh, rodeo. Teach him that graduate school at sixteen that's smart. And you got to walk up on him with his brain blows out because he strayed away and you know he was taught wrong. Taught the right way and just got in the wrong, uh, situation. So I'm not speaking from a place of just talking. I'm speaking from a place that I'm living at this moment right now. So, you know, I, I, I mean, it's that. And, but we got to learn to do what we take to protect our interests, our part, our places. And just like y'all said about the garbage and everything else. All we can do is make some examples. I put laws to make some examples, but, uh, you know, I'm not gonna hold it for any longer. But my condolences goes out to them. And I'll say, uh, thank the road department, uh, in they, during the time with the storms. And, uh, I actually was out and actually wasn't, wasn't out by choice. One of the trees and pine mount fell on, uh, my family, uh, with four people in the vehicle and crushed the truck, uh, with, with them going under. So I was out then. And so by me being out, I just kinda went around and happened to go on log town and a tree fell in the house and stuff like that. But I can say the road department. And I, sometime I stay home pretty good cause I don't get everything done. I think they, uh, should. And I know it, cause it's a lot to get done. But I do take my hats off to Robert and all the ones. Because when crunch time come, the road department gonna have something out of there. Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Department gonna ride. Uh, I appreciate all the volunteers. Everybody, uh, during those time because it's at that time that touches me. Now, a whole lot of time we make some of these guys wish that I ran day-to-day operation, that I could send them home. But at these other time, when we see people stranded, people blocked in, the roads ain't, uh, can't get over. That these guys put their life on the line for the citizens of Allen County. And I just wanna say thank.
Uh, speaking of the children, you know, uh, if they're not mad at you about half the time, you're doing something wrong. Mr. Middleton?
Um, yeah, kinda hitting on what Supervisor Gaines just said about the road department. Saw a post on Facebook the other day. It just made my blood roll. Resident making a smart comment about the road department. And, uh, you know, they're kinda like firefighters. When everybody else is running out, they're running in. And, uh, you know, everybody likes to sit in their house and whine and complain when they don't have power or their air conditioning isn't working or during ice storm, they don't have heat. And these guys are out in trenches trying to keep roads alive from, from medical services and Sheriff's Department saying thing. So, yeah, I, I know what they do. And I know where they been. Waste deep in water, Burke Road Bridge, trying to get it open. Uh, so I'm thankful for what they do every day. Um, I saw Marcus the other day at Home Hardware and I said, man, I hate to say this, but I'm just glad a storm happened during y'all's working time. Sunday, cause that's usually what happens on Friday or Sunday. But, um, I just wanna congratulate all the graduates, uh, high school and college. Um, a lot of kids in our area make us proud every day and, and, and they need to know that we pay attention to what they're doing and hope they continue on the right path. And, uh, that concludes Marcus.
Thank you, Mr. Middleton. Mr. Gaines?
Um, I just have one thing. Alan Lair could not be here today. Um, and he asked for y'all's approval. He has a change order on one of the, um, residents through the home grant. Um, they had some plumbing issues and the grant is going to pay for the repairs. But he just needed y'all's approval for the president to sign off on the change.
How much additional money?
Uh, nine to five hundred.
All right. You heard the request motion by Ms. Hutchins. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried. Is that all you had?
That's all I have.
I just have one item. Um, it is approval for travel to the summer change report conference. It's, uh, July the sixteenth through the eighteenth.
You heard the motion by Mr. Gaines? I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Slover?
ICE and Corsetic finally reached a long-term deal. This one should last until twenty thirteen. Any motion to approve it?
All right. Moved by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? What we asked for or is it their deal, not our deal?
They ain't in all the negotiations with ICE.
All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
There's a pay application request for the IP rail, I'm sorry, for the IP cleanup to IP rail. This number seven. You been out there lately?
Hey, Ron. Got a rail guard.
Moved by Mr. Hutchins. Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
And then we have three public hearings. One for twenty-one, twenty-nine, Second Street, one for seventeen, Bluegrass, and one for three-twenty-nine, Southmore Drive. And let me check.
God, I think that twenty-one, nineteen, I think that house has been sold. It's clean. Am I right, Mr. Gray? Twenty-one, nineteen, Second Street, I think that house is sold and is clean.
I think they went on and got the back part too.
Yeah, it has. I think they sold that house.
Bluegrass has been also been cut. Probably time to cut it green. It's been cut. Now, I don't know about three-twenty-nine, Southmore.
Yeah, there's some email meeting.
Is that three-twenty-nine, Southmore? Same one as been down there.
Yeah, yeah, we couldn't find who it belonged to.
We had sent a letter to
Was it a relative?
Yes, sir. We, we had sent a letter to nineteen, Grafton Heights. And they responded back saying that they will clean up the property. Um, so
Eighteen?
Nineteen.
That's at the end. The one we done EWP at the end on the right down there.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So if we wanna give them next meeting, you wanna take a look and say opinion. Uh, if, if not, we can do a public hearing on three-twenty-nine, Southmore. What we still need to do?
Yeah, Southmore. I don't think they done that one. I know Second Street. I think that house is sold.
Yeah. And I do know that they, um, they had cut, um, seventeen, Bluegrass, cause I was in the area. They actually cut it with law more. Now they probably need to cut it again because of the rain. But they did take care of all the weeds and cut it down.
Y'all wanna hand, have an hearing on three-twenty-nine?
Yeah.
So you need a motion?
Need a motion to open. So move public hearing. Moved by Gaines. Second by Mr. Middleton. All in favor? Public hearing open.
Anyone here regarding three-twenty-nine, Southmore Drive? Three-twenty-nine, Southmore Drive, three-twenty-nine, Southmore Drive? Uh, no one's here. We put a, uh, sign in the yard. We, uh, mailed both the property address and to the owners on according to attached records. And we posted notice on the courthouse pursuant to the statute. And so, I think no one's here to themselves. Uh, whose district is three-twenty-nine? Have you driven by it?
I've driven by it. It, it hadn't been cut like last week, but I didn't go this weekend. So I don't think it's cut this weekend.
Uh, what does it look like?
It's just, it's a lot of tall grass today. With the rain, you could have got it with, with just a, um, regular zero turn or something like that. It just needed cutting grass growing cause the road department went in there and cut it again. So with, with the recent rain, it's growing, grass growing like wildfire, especially where you don't own it there.
Yeah, is it pretty high where critters and snakes and things like that would be obvious?
So it is. It's not quite knee-high, but it's shin-high.
Okay, so we need a
Close the hearing and adjudicate it in minutes.
All right. Need motion.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Gaines. Second by Ms. Hutchins. All in favor? All right. Back to record session.
Um, Supervisor Gray, you wanna be handed back to the docket with your questions? So, um, we're questioning a couple of the public defenders and
You said, you said judge.
I was gonna say, the judge sent the request.
They ordered it to be paid and that's the problem of the statutes. You know, your, your choices are
I didn't know.
Yes. No, no, you were
No, 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 you, you can add. Yeah.
Either appeal or pay, pay the thing and you can find out what's going on.
Yep. So the paperwork that AOC sent over for payroll to process still had, uh, Ryan Calaway on the list. And payroll would not know if he was still. So Mr. Gray, I mean Supervisor Gray asked about it. We checked into it. It will be voided. I am assuming that Matt Kinder probably was the name that should have been there. But I'll follow up because he started to make first.
Back with Judge.
He's Judge Blackwell.
Okay.
Yeah, he replaced him by Ryan Calaway.
Matt Cadare?
Matt, uh, Cadare. Matt Cadare.
So somebody gonna get in touch with them, you know, they
Yeah, they've already tried to get in touch with AOC, but they have avoided it and they're correct and adopted. And then you were asking about the warrant, um, yes, you were having, it said it was therapy sessions for the, uh,
You?
Yep. And then, uh, the other one you asked from nine-one-one, um, I wasn't able to get in touch with Matt. It looks like we had two payments that month, but I will ask for about the files when I can reach out to her. I think that was it.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
Not for the docket. I didn't know if y'all
Oh, okay.
If y'all were ready to prove the docket.
Oh, yeah, okay. We'll go to, um, I need a motion.
So move.
Moved by Ms. Gray. Second by Ms. Hutchins. All in favor? I'm sorry, any, any more discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried. Okay.
Okay, so I received, um, these two requests from, uh, Judge Blackwell to pay two, uh, public defenders.
Mr. Mr. Bookkeeping?
Yeah, it, it just needs to go to bookkeeping. And, um, it's Honorable Christopher Green for five hundred and sixty-two dollars and Paul Sullivan for five hundred dollars.
If there's a conflict of interest with the municipal, pardon, misdemeanors, then that's probably where that one's going.
Do we need a motion or?
I'm just asking.
Just making sure.
I don't know why they're gonna come to you here.
Yes.
Yeah, they, they came to me.
Did you have anything else?
Uh, yes, I need to make a budget amendment. And I, I'll have to paperwork. I forgot it at one forty-five last night. But, um, we need, I need a budget amendment between Fund Three Seventy, which is the Bellwood Project, and Three Sixty-eight, which is, um, in, in, uh,
I think they're all at three seventy now.
Okay, so anyway, I'll get that written off. Um, I do, just put the report on those. I am gonna have to do some work on the twenty-twenty-five budget in the system because some of the departments are, are, are not correct. So I need to correct those. And then I've got a budget amendments that'll come through next week, I mean, next board meeting. So I'll just put y'all on those for that. Um, Bobby's gonna be interested in this one. So I contacted, uh, Concordia, Bank of Franklin, Home Bank, and Regents. And they either declined a quote on the equipment financing or they don't have that, of that kind of financing available. I've reached, uh, Metta Decap Finance. I reached out to them before I left last Tuesday. I haven't gotten anything back. So I only have one quote in, and it's Delta Fuel.
Delta Bank.
I mean, Delta Nine, sorry, Delta Nine.
They decided they're not financing?
We've got cadence.
Cadence.
Thank you.
Cadence, thank you. Did you look at them?
I did.
So, so let me ask you a question. Who do this county do business with banking wise?
Consider email. Listen up.
So we do business with Concordia.
We do, they are our county depository based on a bid.
So who do we put the money from the prison in the bank?
We put all of our money into the county depository.
With who?
That's Concordia.
And they don't, they don't wanna do?
They wanna do business for us. And in fact, I've got a, supposed to meet with Scott Macklemore, the president, to try to figure out if I can entice them to do. They don't like lease purchasing.
So they don't do lease?
No, and I spoke to him as well.
But they, they really wanna do business. And so I think you might be able to entice them to do.
So rather who did it in the past?
Delta.
And they don't wanna do it?
No, Delta, Delta's the only quote I have.
She's only got one.
I, I need, I need
Delta, Cadence, Trustmark.
I emailed Trustmark and I have not got response to that from Trustmark.
Whitney Bank. So, no, there's banks and, you know, you and me, we just don't go to and
Follow what you've been following that I've known that we have been working with, you know what I'm saying? So you can get your clothes. Cause these other guys, since I've been here six years, they hadn't did anything. And she knew when she going. So you help gather the right way to the right people to get the
I like it. I talked to Scott, Scott Macklemore. And he, he, he did sound interested in doing, in doing it going forward. But they don't have the mechanisms in place at this moment to do it.
So wait till next board meeting? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, uh, yeah. And, and I'm, I'm working on it diligently. But yeah, so just let you know who I contacted. I contacted Scott Mc- Macklemore, um, Jackie Darber at Home Bank, Charlie Speed at Regents and
There you go.
And Daniel, um,
Oval Speed.
Get, get on. Bank of Franklin. And he sounded interesting. But again, they're like Concordia. They're not set up to do this. So but he's very interested in doing, you know, doing some things.
I'm sure seeing they got a new branch here, they love doing something.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Concordia got run, not by us, but by, uh, entity fifteen, sixteen years ago. Has never really wanted to do it since. But I'd like to see how they're talking next year. Of course, we've always paid our bills.
Um, this is just an FYI. So we did, I did get the signatories for the airport updated. And right now it's Richard and myself that are the signatories. So we got that done. Um, I talked about that. Talked about that. I think that's all I have in my list. So I'm sure you have any questions?
No, I think we're good. This says two thousand twenty-three. It was in the folder. Maybe it's the wrong date on it.
Who is it?
Uh, the circuit.
Yeah, um, I'll get with them.
Okay. Okay, I have, uh.
Who is this?
Deidre Hayes. Yeah. I have three people wanting to go to the Corners Conference, Deidre Hayes, uh, James Lee, and, uh, Rosa Newman. I need a, a motion. Moved by Ms. Hutchins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs? Motion carried. Okay, uh. Normally we ask people to come in here and present these, but this is travel to a judges conference. Danny Barber. G twenty-nine through July third going to Biloxi. Need a motion. Motion by Ms. Hutchins, seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs? Motion carried. All right. Got, uh, Eva Gibbons going to the Mississippi Circuit Clerk Association in Biloxi. Need a. Motion by Ms. Hutchins. Seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs? Motion carried. Scott, uh, where do we stand with the garbage company right now?
We're in litigation.
How long before we have, we go into court or the judge will make a decision?
I'm awaiting discovery request. You need it updated next week.
Um, okay. Is, is there anything wrong with us asking for an RFP from other garbage companies so we'll have it already? Because it won't cost us anything, will it?
To do an RFP?
Yes.
It can cost you appetites to do it, you know.
I'd just like to know that somebody was online, you know, was gonna be ready to take over if the judge rules in our favor.
How, how long that's gonna be for the judge rules, Scott?
I mean, there's no way I can say definitively when that's gonna be. I would say probably within, you know, thirty to forty-five days.
So what if the judge don't rule in, in our favor?
Then we wouldn't have cause to declare void, so. Over yourself up the dangers.
But the RFP wouldn't hurt us.
It wouldn't, but we can also do a commercial contract. Yeah, which was floated to do it beforehand.
Yeah. I just know that they're usually pretty expensive. We still gotta get a count. How are we gonna get a count on the households? Because that's just, uh, you know, like, we're showing fifty-two hundred when, when the gentleman was up here last time. He said it was fifty-seven hundred. And I don't know what we're paying for.
We need to get that house count going in the meantime, at least. Either way, we need that house count hacker to still work.
I've never been a part of anything like that. I tried to get Robert to do it and he like said.
Joe Murray done it last time.
Joe Murray did.
Uh-oh.
Oh, well, you're not lying in dogger, so?
I'm not, I'm not.
We did one time.
Say, well, when you start with taxes, October of eighty-eight.
Now you gotta sit on a truck and get a hand in the count.
And we gotta.
Is it a paying job? Because I'm.
Yes, a paying job.
We, we need somebody that, you know, is pretty sharp about the county as a whole. So people aren't doubling back on streets that have already been counted or something.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
So if you're gonna sit on a truck and try to get a count, then you gonna, then like on Monday, you gonna sit? Because they go to this area and then on another day, you sit when they go to.
It might be a ten-day, ten-day deal. Because, uh, you get on one route one day and that, there would be two or three trucks riding. You can only deal one route at a time. We're gonna have to have three. How many routes are, does anybody know? We need, we just need to find that out. We gotta figure out how many people we gotta have out there.
I'll find out how many each route are.
I, I would like to. We hadn't heard anything from the sanitation department in about four months. I get, I get texts every day about garbage not being picked up and I.
Mr. President.
Does everybody else still get that?
I don't get it. Mr. President, uh. I think what we need to do is when you get those texts and verify, we got something in place where we can find them if they're not picking up the trash. Is that not right, correct, Scott?
That's what's in the contract, is they get a hundred dollars.
So if, if, if we could continue to get texts and they're not picking up garbage, we need to find a way to go by the contract and find them. Because I've noticed in this world, the only way you get somebody's attention, when you hurt their pocket.
Uh, I was just sitting there, I heard a report from the sanitation department in months, you know, normally.
They don't be coming over.
Did you?
I'll take care of it.
Okay, may I see?
Just make sure when we verify that, that they are putting their garbage out. And, you know, because you, one person may say on that road that they didn't get picked up, but the rest of them don't got picked up. So it's a certain time that garbage needs to be out.
Well, I'm gonna tell you what's going on. I'm gonna tell you what's going on because it happened last week. Somebody called me and said that they didn't pick up their garbage. And I say, well, they missed everybody? They say, well, no, they just missed me. I say, well, now, you know, this is what I say. I say, now, you know, in a neighborhood when they pick up everybody's garbage and this one or two houses don't have nothing out there, people taking pictures. So if, 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 he said, well, 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 don't worry about it. Tell them, don't worry about it. So they don't understand that when you say these people not picking up your garbage, they taking a picture that you don't have no garbage out there. So they need to know that before they say they're picking it up.
Anybody else have anything else? I wanna congratulate all the graduates, high school, college. I don't care if you graduated from the sixth grade to kindergarten. Congratulations, because please stay in school. Uh, and, uh, I, I, Ricky, I feel for everything that's going on all over this country with this black-on-black crime. And, and as well as, uh, the immigrant situation and some of that crime that's going on and, you know. People are working on it, I know that, I know they are. It's just like this country kinda got out of control for a long time and, and it's, it's gonna be hard reeling everybody back in. But, uh, if nobody has anything else.
I got one more.
That's, okay.
I got one more thing to say. Uh, I think we need to make a big deal out of the workforce development, uh, program that they got in place to kind of, uh, help individuals that decide they don't wanna go to a, a traditional college to get the four-year, a two-year degree. They got.
One-year, uh, one-year program. As of right now, they have, uh, all expenses paid, electrical, one, two, and three. Have carpentry, plumbing, and brick masonry. And they are, they are entering truck driving. I don't know if they got it, I know they, so they was paying for part of truck driving. And you're exactly right, that's a part of this board and they hire, that's giving back to the community. Uh, it matters not, and it's not just an age group. If you graduated, you didn't go to school, it's for traditional, in non-traditional students, that you can go get those trades free. And you are right, Ricky, because I, I'm up to date on it, but I hadn't been pushing it. Uh, I have been pushing, but I hadn't been pushing on the magnitude level that it should be. Because coming from a, a educational background and workforce, some of our biggest problem that we didn't have skill later. Now we have programs and it's three hours a day. You can either go from, I think it's eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, either you can go from five to eight. So it'll fit, uh, your schedule, working or not, uh, uh, working. And, uh, but I do wanna say congratulations because that's something that nobody ever, we don't talk about workforce so much. And it's real quiet over there. Now, actually, I asked her a couple of times to come and she been busy, but I don't mind her not coming. But I will give, uh, Mr. Wanda Williams and her staff accolade for doing what they are doing for our community. And that's not just, this, this on behalf of this board, I speak on that because she's hired by the city in the school board. And that is a very, very good help to our community to have a free education.
Like, then people should take advantage of it.
And the last thing, that was finishing Ricky, but all, all, each one of y'all, I will make sure I say congratulations to all the graduates. Uh, and I'm like, uh, President Wilson, regardless of what you graduated to, uh, uh, what you, if you graduated from kindergarten, from daycare to first grade, uh, graduate, and, and especially, uh, thanks to a lot of them. And thank you for my own son, that graduated with honors and, uh, with several scholarships that I'm proud of. So not just him, but thank you to all the area graduations. And I will definitely say, piggyback on what, uh, President Wilson said, stay in school and get your education. And that's it, Mr. President.
Does your son still manage? Does your son still manage?
He get better for you.
And that's a fair.
Because I have, I have to congratulate them on this too. And I know Supervisor Gaines has been over there a few times and I supervise Gray and myself. That's over at Mac that has start over there. They are doing really great things with those kids. I mean, they are so involved with those kids. They graduated, what, last week, a week, last week? They graduated last week, uh, our class. And I have to tell you, um, they, they doing a really good job over there. I wish you all would take the time and go visit over there because, um, it's just enlightening. So, uh, I, I like to congratulate them too.
Let, let, let me say this. Uh, a friend of mine told me a long time ago, I ain't, I ain't know nothing about head start. A friend of mine told me a long time ago, when I was at Holy Family, and then I went to carpenter for six months. They used me. I went there for six months, then they sent me to North South. But let me say this. My friend told me, said, well, you don't understand about head start because you got a head start from home. Because my parents was educators. Those kids are getting a head start, which they wouldn't normally get a head start because they probably be at home. And, and you, you got to start. Every conference I went to, say you gotta start educating as soon as they born. Just imagine a kid don't start playing basketball till he in the seventh grade. You behind. Playing baseball till you're in junior high, you are behind. You gotta start with these kids when they little bitty babies. And, and if you don't, they gonna be behind. And I, I, I don't, I don't think, this community right now is all right. We could do better. And people don't wanna hear, but we gonna have to get back to the village approach. I know people don't want you talking to their kids or saying nothing to their kids, but it, it, it takes a village. Because if without the village, a whole lot of people gonna be left behind. Mr. President, I promise you, that's it.
Okay. Hey, yeah, you discipline somebody else's kid nowadays. The mama who is undisciplined as well most of the time will get on your butt. But anyway, I need a motion to close.
That's good. And it's.
Motion for recess.
And I'm gonna save the recess and I'm gonna say something in discussion, just so Ms. Hutchins didn't know, just so y'all know. But somehow I got adopted for the grand marshal of the Mount Western Day Program. That I gotta, that I have a horse and gather people for, they have a western day for the, all the kids in the family. And somehow I'm the grand marshal, but I don't.
Since you brought that up, is there, is there drinking allowed at, at the arena?
Uh, it's signed with no alcohol.
Okay, and what about smoking dope?
It ain't never smoked dope nowhere.
Because I've, I've, I've heard some people have told me, man, there's some problems out there. Might be in those unlight areas.
One of the things, and I'm glad you said that, so, uh, the sheriff was gone, so, so.
We're, this is discussion.
Yeah, we had, we had a discussion. But one of the things that I did do, because I hadn't been, and the lights and stuff that I heard, uh, when I got up and went in that top corvette, I wanted to make sure that we had sheriff department security that was there. And I think that it might have been an instance that you have law enforcement, but hadn't had our active sheriff department. Because you know, we had several conversations, so we gonna take care of that.
Okay. All in favor? We already recessed.